Okay, I'm looking at the panelists and it looks. Oh, what about Frank Pendleton? I don't see him here yet.
I was just gonna say, I think if you could promote him from the attendee list.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Thanks, Kerry.
Yep. No, thank you. Okay, Frank, you are now promoted. I think that's all the panelists we need. Anyone see anyone missing?
I believe Jen Miller was going to join us as well.
Oh, yeah, she's an attendee. Let me. I saw her here.
Great, thanks again.
Yep, Jennifer, you're promoted now to panelist. This is great. I see everyone putting your names in. Hi, Flaxton Conway. Nice to see you joining us and all the other familiar names. You don't have to put your name in the chat if you don't want to, but you're welcome to. Right now, we have 59 attendees and 12 panelists. That's good. We're one minute after. I thought we might have a few more than that, but if people have something better to do on a Friday afternoon, I don't blame them. Let's give it just another, you know, half a minute or a minute here, then we'll get going. And Chris, it looks like this is being recorded now. Is that correct?
Yep.
Great. Let's see, is there anyone? Oh, you know what I meant to do was, and maybe Susan or Chris can help me with this, in the chat, can you put, Chris, your email address and maybe your work phone if you want? And then one more, I want to put that. Whitney, maybe I'll ask you, or Nessie, can you put the comment email address in the chat also? If you don't mind.
Sure, will do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I think that we should get going here. It is three minutes after. We have the panelists here in place. Thank you, everyone. And we were up to 80 attendees now. For the attendees who just joined, we thought that everyone would be able to see all the other names, and we know that there's interest in that, but that we don't have that function right now. So what you can do is put your name in the chat if you want, name and affiliation. Go for it. You're not required to, but it's helpful so people know who all is on the meeting. Okay, let's bring this meeting to order. My name is Kerry Griffin. I am a staff officer with the Pacific Fishery Management Council. I'll be acting as a sort of M C for this meeting, but the bulk of the presentations and discussion is going to involve many other people today that you'll be hearing from. We have Chris Kleinschmidt. He is our I T guru who is helping run this meeting behind the scenes and helping getting people logged in. And I think he added his contact info in the chat, and you can also send a chat message to him if you're having trouble logging on. Let's see, we also have from council staff today, Merrick Burden. He's our executive director for the Pacific Fishery Management Council, and you'll be hearing a little bit from him in a few minutes. I'm going to go over some sort of rules of the road and just a couple overview points, and then we'll turn it over to our chairs of the Marine Planning Committee, Susan Chambers and Mike Conroy, and then have some opening remarks, and then we'll move on to the presentation. This meeting is being recorded, and it will be available for future viewing. It might take, well, I don't know if it'll be available today, but within a few days, we'll be able to get a link posted to our website. And then Boam has said that they can also share that link on their website. So you'll be able to view it in the future. This is a pretty big meeting. We're going to do our best to accommodate people, but it can get clunky sometimes, so just bear with us. And let's see, the agenda, after we finish our sort of front matter, is going to include a presentation from Boam on Oregon offshore wind energy planning, and then we'll have a fairly brief presentation on the Ora Wind Map Tool that is, that houses much of the data and information that is being used in this process. And then the last, the second half of the meeting is mainly two agenda items, question and discussion, and then and then public comment, and we'll squeeze a break in there at some point. Maybe after the question discussion, or maybe during it, depending on how quickly we're moving through. And just to clarify, because there have been a lot of questions about that. So for the question and discussion part of the agenda, we intend that to be the opportunity for some dialogue, for some engagement back and forth, focused on the presentations that you will have just heard. And, you know, that's an opportunity for attendees here to, you know, have dialogue with, primarily with Boam, but, you know, if there's other questions directed at the council or the Marine Planning Committee, that's fine, too. This is officially a meeting of the Pacific Council's Marine Planning Committee. That's how it was noticed. We put in the federal register notice, but it's really, you know, a joint meeting with Boam. But because it's a Marine Planning Committee meeting, when we get to the questions and discussion, we're going to give priority to Marine Planning Committee members. So when we get to that point and we see raised hands, we're going to do our best to give priority to Marine Planning Committee members. They represent a large bulk of the fisheries stakeholders. And, you know, and that was really the purpose of forming the Marine Planning Committee. That said, we also want to, as much as possible, keep it open to, you know, anyone else who has questions either directly about the, well, mostly about the presentations you'll hear, but, you know, there's no strict rules to that anyway. So that's how the questions and discussion part will go. And then the public comment part is intended a little more for sort of statements and public comments, you know, for Boam's benefit primarily, and that's designed to be a little bit less, you know, back and forth and more sort of traditional public comment. In the chat window, you see a, if you can scroll to it amongst all the names, is an email address for submitting written comments to Boam. So if you'd rather just put something in writing, or we don't have enough time, which could happen, we'll see. You can also submit something in writing to them. You'll hear more about future comment opportunities as well, so I don't want to belabor that point. But really, I just wanted to make that distinction between the queue, the questions and discussions part, which is really meant as a dialogue, and the public comment, which is more a traditional public comment. Okay, and now for a few rules of the road here. This is, again, it's a fairly large meeting here. We're up to about 130 people altogether. So it's important that you keep yourself muted when you're not talking, please, and use the raised hand feature, which we will be paying attention to. Susan and I are going to be herding those cats and paying attention to the raised hands, so we'll recognize you as much as possible, especially when we get later on in the agenda. You can use the chat for posting links and information or your name and affiliation, as you can see, a lot of people are doing, which is great. But please avoid having side conversations in the chat window. It's just too hard to, you know, pay attention. And honestly, you know, I, for one, am not going to be paying a lot of attention to substantive questions that are in the chat, you know, we just can't do that. And so just use it for, you know, you can post links or helpful information, or if you need help, you know, if you can't, I don't know, unmute yourself or whatever, that kind of thing. So that's what the chat window is for, at least for this meeting, not substantive sidebar conversations. If you are someone who is on, you know, an iPad or Joe's computer or something like that, or a phone number, try to rename yourself so we know who all is on here. I don't see a lot of attendees in that situation, so that's good. Sometimes we'll see 20 phone numbers and we don't know who those are.
Kerry, let me interrupt just super quick, apologies.
Yep.
The attendees cannot rename themselves. Only panelists can do that.
Thank you for the reminder. Okay, well, the good news is that pretty much everyone has a name, so I'm not going to worry about that at this point. And then also, the attendees are putting their names, for the most part, in the chat window and their affiliations, so we know. Okay, I mentioned that it's being recorded, and it will be available in the future to view. And then the, Chris, correct me here, this last item, if you wish to make verbal public comment or ask questions, you have to download the new Ring Central application. I don't think that applies in this case, right? Because we're using the
No, no, it still applies. So if anybody is on the attendee list currently, and they've joined via the web browser, even though that there, if we try to give you access to your microphone, it won't work because you're not using the application. And that was detailed at the top of the webpage where you would have joined the link for this meeting. So you need to download the Ring Central app, the one that has the big R logo, not the one that says Ring. And it's also hyperlinked on our webpage. And then you will be able to be enabled for hand raised and enabling your microphone for question and answer section. But the web browser is not supported in this platform, other than a listen-only mode.
Okay, thank you. So there was a reason for that. Yeah, so if you're someone who is intending to make verbal public comment later, you have to install the Ring Central application. Chris, if you get a chance, could you put a link in to where people can go for that?
Will do.
Thank you. And then another question for Chris. This came up side chat. One attendee doesn't see a mute, unmute button. So I think, I think that's, I think I know the answer, because we have to say, we have to make it allowed for you to talk, and then you can unmute yourself. Is that right?
That is correct. As an attendee, you are here to listen. When the time comes that they open the floor for questions, you'll utilize the hand raise feature to get our attention, and then that's where we can go and enable your microphone capabilities when you're running the app, and you'll have the ability to speak, at which point, when you're done, we'll remove those abilities, and you'll be back to just an attendee.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. That's helpful. So that's why people can't see the mute button yet. But you can put, you can raise your hand, and you can put stuff in the chat. Okay, again, I mentioned this. Oh, there's the email address. If you would like to send written comments to Boam, there's the email address to send them. And last but not least, everyone, please be respectful and professional here. We're all doing the best we can. And, you know, this has the opportunity for some, you know, sensitivity, and it's very important for a lot of people, all these offshore development, and particularly offshore wind development, planning activities. But, but, you know, let's just make sure that we remain respectful and professional throughout. I think that's all I had. Oh, there's an overview of the agenda really quick. So maybe I'll just pause for a second, see if there's any questions about, you know, the rules of the road, or muting and unmuting, or anything like that, before we move on to our opening remarks from our chairs and other dignitaries. And panelists, you can just unmute yourself if you want to say anything right now. Okay, great. Well, moving on, I would now like to turn to our co-chairs of the Marine Planning Committee, Mike Conroy and Susan Chambers. So I don't know which one of you wanted to go first, but I have Mike listed first. So why don't we have Mike give opening remarks, and then Susan, and then we'll move on to Merrick and Doug Boran. Mike, it's yours.
Thanks. You can hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. Yeah, so thanks all for coming out here today. I just want to start by acknowledging and welcoming a lot of new faces to this important conversation. Given the size and the range of the proposed call areas, there will certainly be direct or cumulative impacts to most of our fisheries habitats and ecosystems. I'm looking forward to a productive and meaningful exchange of thoughts and ideas with Boam, with an eye towards giving the council family comfort that there is a process which takes into account and addresses our fears, livelihoods, operations, and concerns about known impacts and impacts which are yet to be discovered, understood, or analyzed. And then Kerry, one thing you didn't mention during your intro is, I'm assuming that at some point, we're going to consider a supplemental report to the briefing book. So do we need to think about rapporteurs at this point, or do you want to get through the introductions first?
Maybe we'll just keep moving through the introductions. We chatted about that briefly, and I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, that a supplemental might be fairly succinct and straightforward. It would basically be putting in the council meeting record that the proposed call areas are out now, and including some links and things like that. I think we're not anticipating, you know, sort of long supplemental report that has new recommendations or anything, you know, anything more than the committee already put in. So that's my long-winded way of saying, maybe we don't need to assign a rapporteur, but you're the chair, so it's up to you.
Thanks. Susan?
Hey, thank you, Mike and Kerry. I just wanted to say thanks to everybody as well for joining. I think this will be a very important meeting. We really want to hear from the fishermen out there who, and processors and members of the public who are interested in this and the proposed call areas. I also want to thank Boam for a very good task force meeting last week, and for acknowledging the 1,300 meter limit, that there may be some flexibility on that as this process moves forward. And thank you, a big shout out to Whitney and other Boam staff for sharing the waypoints in an Excel spreadsheet. I think that's important so that we can download them for use in our chart plotters. Or, as Corey Niles pointed out, they also work on Google Earth, so some of you may be interested in that. I'm looking forward to a good discussion today with a meaningful exchange of ideas. We have a lot of time for that. So speak up and let us know what you think and ask some questions. This is your time. I think we will, you know, furthermore, for some of the people in the council process, we will be talking about this more in our advisory bodies, but this should give you a good overview. So thank you all for joining today. Back to you, Kerry.
Thank you, Susan. I appreciate it. Next up, we have Merrick Burden, our executive director of the Pacific Fishery Management Council. He has some opening remarks. So go ahead, Merrick.
Thank you, Kerry, and thank you for calling me a dignitary earlier. I'm certain that is the first time that's happened. So welcome, everyone. And as Kerry said, I'm Merrick Burden. I'm the executive director of the Pacific Fishery Management Council. And looking at our participants here, I see a lot of familiar names, some names that I have not yet met. I look forward to meeting those of you I don't know yet in the near future, hopefully, and meeting those of you I do know in person at some point also in the near future. So some opening remarks here. So some of this will overlap with what Kerry has already said, but it does bear worth repeating. So the purpose of the meeting is to discuss the Oregon call areas that were recently announced by the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. And so we worked with Boam staff to put this meeting together, and several Boam staff are on hand to present on these areas and to communicate with you all about the plans, the proposed area, and their potential impact. So I'd just like to thank the Boam folks for being here and working with us to put this together. I think this is a good endeavor for us all, this dialogue that we're going to have. So as Kerry indicated, this is officially a meeting of the council's Marine Planning Committee. We formed this committee in June of 2021, and the purpose of the committee is to facilitate input and engagement from fisheries stakeholders in the council process on issues like wind energy and aquaculture. So M P C members are on hand here, and they will be listening intently. Some of them will likely be engaged in discussion and public comment. And that, of course, does not limit input by others, but the purpose here is the Marine Planning Committee. I'd like to be clear about the council's role in the offshore wind energy process and the purpose of the meeting today as it concerns the council. So the council's purpose in being here is to facilitate information flow and discussion. And what we're not doing is providing comments today on behalf of the council itself. So the council has in the past and will in the future provide comments to Boam on various projects, activities, and will do so via other comment opportunities. But this meeting is specifically designed as an opportunity for you all to engage directly with Boam, and the council's role is really one of facilitation at this point. Thinking ahead to our council meeting next week, for anyone interested in commenting to the council, you'll have an opportunity to do so. There is a Marine Planning Agenda Item scheduled for the afternoon of March 11th. If you've looked at the briefing book materials, you'll note that the M P C has written a report, and we advise you all to review that report, provide comments to the council on offshore wind and aquaculture matters. And if you choose to do so, we'd encourage comments that are specific to a couple of things. So one is specific to fisheries and ecosystem impacts that relate to the Oregon call areas. And the second relates to process improvements and suggestions for Boam about how to potentially improve the process so that better decision-making can be made on this matter. So I think that concludes my opening remarks, and I think Doug Boran may have some, too. So Doug, I will pass it over to you.
Great, thanks for that, Merrick. And just checking to make sure that you can hear me.
Yep.
Okay, great. And I wanted to second the comment, Merrick, about the, you know, being a dignitary. I definitely did not, would not consider myself that, that's for sure. But I would just like to say, you know, good afternoon, everyone. You know, my name is Doug Boran. I'm the Pacific Regional Director of the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, or Boam. You know, welcome to the meeting. You know, I'm happy to be here today with our important partner, the Pacific Fishery Management Council, or the P F M C, you know, specifically the Ad Hoc Marine Planning Committee. You know, first, I'd like to thank Mike and Susan for having us here today. And I would also like to thank, you know, Merrick and Karen Braby and Kerry, and the rest of the P F M C and Ad Hoc Marine Planning Committee for working with us to strengthen opportunities for the fishing community to engage Boam on issues related to potential offshore wind energy leasing in Oregon. You know, for those who aren't familiar with Boam, we're the federal agency tasked with managing energy and mineral resources development on the U S outer continental shelf, or the O C S. You know, we're the lead agency that oversees offshore wind energy leasing, which is our focus here today. You know, thank you for being here. The purpose of today's meeting is to provide an update on relevant offshore wind energy activities. Specifically, we're going to talk about the next steps in the Boam authorization process, including discussing the proposed call areas for offshore wind leasing in Oregon. You know, some of you may have tuned into the Boam Oregon Task Force meeting we held last Friday. You know, and we are grateful that the P F M C has agreed to provide today's venue so we can share the same information with you before we publish a federal register notice to initiate Boam's formal leasing process. You know, that notice will include a public comment period, and formal comments can be provided through a docket on regulations.gov. As you will hear today, we have been working closely with Oregon's Department of Land Conservation and Development, or D L C D, over the past several years to ensure that ocean users, tribes, stakeholders, and key partners are engaged from the very beginning of the offshore wind energy leasing process. We will continue to conduct our coordinated outreach and engagement effort with the state of Oregon throughout the process. You know, we've also appreciated the collaborative relationship with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife in the identification and review of fish and fishing data sets to inform planning. And we look forward to the continued coordination with O D F W to reduce space use conflicts with the fishing community. You know, I want to acknowledge that our work to try to avoid conflicts is not finished. And as we have now defined more specific areas for further consideration, we look forward to more focused discussion with a goal towards ocean uses like offshore wind and commercial fishing, not only coexist, but to thrive. You know, I do want to also state that Boam's mandate is to consider many competing interests. I acknowledge that means no single party will get everything that they want, but we work to ensure that everyone sees themselves in the process. You know, we hope today's working session is seen as a great example of the collaboration and commitment between Boam and the P F M C to foster a foundation of transparency, open dialogue, and meaningful engagement. You know, I look forward to hearing your thoughts and continuing this conversation beyond today. Thank you again for sharing your time with us and looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Doug. I appreciate those opening remarks, and you too, Merrick. You'll be dignitaries in my eyes. So I'm glad this was your first shout out as dignitaries. We have several people who are on the phone. I do want to keep an eye on the time, but we're going to try something really quickly to see if we can assign names to phone numbers. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go down the list and click Allow to Talk, and you should be allowed to talk. You might have to hit star six on your phone to unmute yourself. But what, but when I call on you, please just give us your name. And Susan, if you could at least jot down their name either in the chat or on our Google Doc, that would be helpful. So let's give this a try. So number 206 that ends in 214, name, please.
Lori Beal.
Thank you, Lori. And 253 ending in 603.
Dave Hawley.
Thank you, Dave. It was a Hawley with an H?
Yes, correct.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, next up is 360 ending in 233, name, please. 360, two ending in 233, are you there?
Yeah, this is Todd Gaden.
Gaden with a G?
G on the last name.
Great. Okay, thank you, Todd. The numbers rearranged themselves. Okay, 503 ending in 005, name, please.
This is Jason Stearman, Oregon Department of Energy, just in listen mode today.
Thank you, Jason. And let's try 503 ending in 833. Did I do that one already?
Hi, Simone Randolph. I'm just listening.
Thank you, Simone. 541 ending in 059, name, please. 541 ending in 059. I think you just muted yourself. Okay, moving on, 541 ending in 083. 541.
Simone, again, you muted me instead.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so who's that?
This is Simone Randolph, 083503740833. So you just unmuted the wrong number.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Got it. Okay, thank you. Yeah, 083 is unmuted, but I don't hear a response. 541 ending in 182, name please.
Rex Leach, Coos Bay, Oregon.
Okay, thank you, Rex. And 541 ending in 554. Sorry, one more time.
Hi, Kerry. Arlene Merrim.
Oh, hi, Arlene. Thank you. And just a couple more here, 541 ending in 586.
Hi, Kerry, can you hear me? Katie Pearson.
Thank you, Katie. Gotcha. 619 ending in 349, name please.
Peter Flurnoy, Western Fish Boat Owners Association.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, 707 ending in 206, name please.
Is that 8206?
I only see the last three digits and the first three digits.
Repeat?
707 ending in 206.
Yeah, Andy Colonna, Humboldt Bay.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, we're getting down here. Another 707 ending in 262. Okay, moving on, 971 ending in 209.
Yeah, that's Peter Cogswell with Simply Blue Energy.
Okay, how do you spell your last name, Peter?
C-O-G-S-W-E-L-L.
Thank you very much. And then I'm going to try one more time for 707 ending in 262. I think I didn't get that one yet.
Tony Canea for Brad, California.
Okay, what's your last name again?
Canea, C-A-N-N-I-A.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Okay. Susan, I'm assuming you were madly typing those down. Thank you very much. It's good to have a record of who's all on the call today. We got a lot of people. All right, so.
One, but we'll figure it out later.
Okay, sounds fine. Yeah, the numbers, they jump around, so it's hard to keep track. So we're a little behind, so let's move on. I'm going to stop sharing the screen. And next on the agenda is a presentation by Whitney Howar and Frank Pendleton. And I'll let you guys introduce yourselves. And then when it's time to move on, you can introduce the next presenter too. So you should be able to share your screen, Whitney and Frank. So go right ahead.
So are you setting up to share, Whitney, or do you need me to do that?
This is, this is Whitney. I just tried to share and I'll try again.
I see something happening now.
Okay, great. So it's, can you, can you confirm you see the screen?
I can see the screen and hear you loud and clear.
Still hear me. Well, great. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks all. My name is Whitney Howar. I'm a renewable energy specialist in the region. And I'm also coordinator for the BoM Oregon Intergovernmental Renewable Energy Task Force. And just want to echo the earlier remarks to thank everyone for their time today and their interest on the topic and their participation in the meeting. I'll be co-presenting this presentation with my colleague Frank Pendleton. He's a GIS specialist. And much of this presentation, it was already acknowledged, was presented to the task force meeting last week. And we are looking forward to the discussion later this afternoon. From our opening remarks with Doug Boren, and I just want folks to know that there are some additional BoM staff on the, on the call today and promoted as panelists to be able to engage in the Q and A discussion period. So we have Rick Yard from the Office of Environment, the regional supervisor, as well as Nessie Sumite, the regional supervisor for the Office of Strategic Resources. Also on the call is Jennifer Miller. She is Acting Renewable Energy Section Chief, myself, and then also Frank Pendleton. So as, as we kick off the call today, and I just want to frame a little bit with the BoM Oregon Intergovernmental Renewable Energy Task Force, what this, what this group is. And it's a partnership between federal, state, and local agencies, as well as tribal governments. The task force in Oregon was established in 2011, and it provides input into BoM's decision-making process. And the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development is our partner in planning these meetings. Because the task force is not a federal advisory committee, so that's under FACA, only governmental entities are able to be included in the task force. That said, BoM has set up a number of opportunities for members of the public to attend, attend the meetings and after the meeting, either the session or the full meeting adjourned, there are public input opportunities. The conversation of offshore wind energy planning in Oregon began in 2019. And I want to recognize the work of the task force as we began this discussion in the September 2019 meeting. At that meeting, BoM and DLCD committed to drafting a plan to outline how we would conduct our data gathering and engagement process. In June of 2020, the task force discussed that draft plan. And at the meeting, BoM and the state, the state of Oregon committed to offshore wind energy planning, and that plan was then finalized, which is available on our webpage. BoM and DLCD then conducted outreach and engagement with 75 meetings with potentially interested and affected parties and hosted six public webinars. DLCD led the charge with Ora Wind Map and providing a data catalog and data visualization with the best publicly available data and information. And Andy Liner is presenting on Ora Wind Map later this afternoon. Last fall, we discussed the outcome of the data gathering and engagement effort, and that the final summary report is also available on our webpage. That report detailed the key input and concern that BoM and DLCD received from its engagement meetings, from the public, from tribes and other stakeholder engagement meetings regarding offshore wind energy planning. So for example, relevant to those who are likely calling in today, we heard for the interest in understanding the potential socioeconomic impacts of fishing activity and understanding its long-term impact on the livelihood of fishermen and other ocean users. So again, that report is also available on our webpage. I just, I have to apologize. I meant to say February 2022, just last week, BoM and the state convened the 10th Task Force Virtual Meeting. We had about 385 people attend the meeting virtually, and we had a few public input opportunities after the close of each of those sessions. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss the next step in BoM's authorization process, and it included the discussion of the proposed call areas, which is the beginning of our, of our process. And that, that really brings us to today where we're now taking a deeper dive into the, to the concern pertaining to the fishing community. And just also want to echo Doug's remarks and thanking the PFMC and hosting this, this online working session today. So I'm now going to outline the, the presentation that was provided in last week's task force meeting. So in our overall BoM offshore wind energy authorization process, these, these activities that have all discussed between BoM and the state in our planning efforts all inform BoM's authorization process for commercial offshore wind development. And this, these activities are indicated with the brown bar on the far left side of this slide in terms of the BoM state planning effort. BoM's authorization process is a multi-year effort over four stages, beginning with planning and analysis, moving to leasing, and then site assessment, and finally, the construction operations plan review, or COP, and other design reports before any construction or installation can occur in federal waters. So we're in the first stage of planning, and this meeting is informing that the call for information and nominations, which will be published in the federal register, is the formal start of our process to identify potential areas for leasing. It's BoM's intent to continue outreach and collecting data and information so that we can refine areas that are most suitable for leasing. I'll detail the process steps and the terminology to leasing in the next slide. But it's important to clarify that lease issuance provides the less sea the right to conduct its site assessment and site characterization. These steps inform the less seas' construction and operations plan for BoM's environmental review under the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, and for BoM's technical review. It's not until the COP stage years down the road, when we know the details of the project with respect to the number, the size, the layout, and the location within the lease area of the project of the wind turbine generators and its proposed submarine power cable layouts in order to evaluate its potential impact. So as I mentioned, the call for information and nominations or call is published in the federal register, and it's the formal start of BoM's authorization process. It includes the description of the call areas, which are the areas under consideration for potential leasing. There is a formal public comment period where we solicit comments to comment regarding or information of those areas, which include the existing uses, environmental information, or other concerns, as well as the second piece, which is the nominations of interest or development from the offshore wind industry. After the call is issued, we enter the area identification phase or area ID. And this is to identify areas for environmental, environmental review. In Oregon, it's our intent to winow down from the call area to the wind energy areas. The lease is the area BoM offers for lease during a lease sale. For offshore wind planning in Oregon and in coordination with the state, we are developing call areas large enough to allow for flexibility and refinement from the, from the call to the wind energy area designation. We focus where the, where commercial viability is greatest, which aligns where the wind resource is strongest. We are considering three gigawatts for near-term development offshore Oregon. The considerations into the call are preliminary, and they're based on the best available information. We look forward to continued data gathering and analysis to refine areas for potential leasing. So some of the considerations that I'll now walk through are range from the, from, from the wind resource and cost of energy and other considerations for development specifically, including transmission depth and slope and existing cables. And then moving into some of the environmental and wildlife considerations with marine mammals, sea turtles, marine birds, and it also habitats, and specifically rock reef habitat. Some discussion on submerged land forms and tribal input. And then Frank Pendleton will discuss some of the vessel traffic and fishing considerations. There are three proposed call areas offshore, south, central, and southern Oregon. From north to south is Coos Bay, then Vanden and Brookings. Estimating the power capacity with a power density of three megawatts per square kilometer, these three proposed call areas total approximately 17 gigawatts of offshore wind energy. As I mentioned earlier, our guiding principles is for three gigawatts of offshore wind for near-term commercialization. So I'm now going to walk through these, these considerations on how BoM developed the three proposed call areas based on coordination with the task force members and stakeholder input. So the three areas are, are where the wind resource is the strongest and where the cost of energy, this is where the cost is reported to be or modeled to be the least expensive, and this is reported as the levelized cost of energy. It is shown here on these maps. This work is, has been in collaboration with the National Renewable Energy Lab. So you'll see here the maps of, of central, or the map of Oregon with the, the central and south, south central and southern Oregon showing the areas of the strongest wind resource. For those that have looked at offshore wind energy outside of Oregon, you'll, or I should say focusing in Oregon, we consider that where the, the average wind speed of over greater than seven meters per second is viable for, for offshore wind energy development. And off the coast of Oregon, there are, the, the wind resource is strong along, along the entire state. So the cost of energy closely follows that, that wind resource. And you see the, the lower predicted cost of energy is, is connected with that strong resource. Consideration of transmission is also important. And again, I'm going to reference another study from the National Renewable Energy Lab in terms of understanding how much offshore wind could be integrated into Oregon's power system. So we, and when I say integrated into Oregon's power system, this is without major upgrade to the trans coastal transmission. So that's bringing, bringing the power to the I-5 corridor or without significant curtailment of offshore wind energy dinner, generation. It's important to note that the, the study that presented here from NREL is looking at offshore wind at distributed along the currently available five coastal substations. And then you'll see here on the table on the far right, the, the max capacity of offshore wind that could be accepted from the two most southern points of interconnection, both Winston and Fairview. So these proposed call areas, two of which are close to two of the five points of interconnection. The westward boundary of the proposed call area is at that 1,300 meter depth, which was the planning area used in our data gathering and engagement effort. And this was developed with the state and the task force. The 1,300 meter depth is roughly on the geologic continental slope, and westward beyond the slope quickly drops to a depth of over greater than 2,000 meters. So future planning and leasing may be, may be considered beyond that, that 1,300 meter depth. So here is a three-dimensional view showing the proposed call areas in the shelf and the steep slopes. The continental slope indicates there's an increased risk to industry, which is present in the decreased slope stability and increase in incuring and cable engineering challenges. Regarding slope, a prominent canyon system was removed from the call area of consideration because of the complex terrain and the concentration of steep slopes. Slopes greater than 10 degrees increase the project complexity and so as well as the cost. And so high densities of slope in deeper waters in these canyon systems were excluded. High concentration of submerged cables were also removed from considerations. If there was a cable within a, a single cable within the area, it could be managed within the lease area, and it so was not removed from consideration at this time. The eastern boundary of the three proposed call areas are 13.8 statute miles or 12 nautical miles from shore. And this was developed in coordination with the state. It's providing a buffer to avoid potential impacts to a number of wildlife species habitats and ocean users. For example, our understanding of crab and pink shrimp fishing is mostly avoided. Later in the presentation, Frank will be discussing the other fishing considerations and existing data sets. Later in the presentation, Frank will be discussing the other fishing considerations and existing data sets. Input from stakeholders and coordination with the U.S. Coast Guard, the longstanding and established crabber toe boat lane agreement is avoided. So with respect to marine mammals, the proposed areas avoids where most gray whales occur with the highest density of these animals within six nautical miles from shore. Additionally, most of the southern resident killer whale critical habitat is avoided, which expands from shore to two hundred meter water depth. There is overlap with these proposed areas with the humpback whale critical humpback whale critical habitat. Additionally, Boam has been in coordination with the National Marine Fisheries Service on unit fourteen of the critical habitat. And at this time, the area is included in the proposed Brookings call area to gather more information. We also recognize that Endangered Species Act or ESA listed species are in these proposed areas as listed on this slide. The Coos Bay and Banden call area overlap with the leatherback sea turtle critical habitat. And similarly, there there are ESA listed species that may be present in this area. Okay, so regarding potential impacts to marine birds, there was an initial review of available bird data outside of twelve nautical miles from shore and no areas were removed at this time due to any occurrence, single occurrence or high occurrence of species. The short-tailed albatross, which is an endangered species, will be of the greatest concern with presence in the proposed call area and is also a high stakeholder concern. Hawaiian petrels do occur off the Oregon coast and tend to tend to be further offshore. However, there have been sightings of these birds in Hackett Bank and other other areas closer to shore. Regarding migratory birds, there are a number of species of conservation concern, including the black-footed albatross and the pink-footed shearwater. With respect to rock reef habitat, in coordination with the state, the National Marine Fisheries Service, tribal members and other stakeholders were seeking to avoid large concentrations of rock reef habitat. Nymphs and Audubon provided input to exclude Hackett Bank and Stonewall Bank if they're they are important feeding areas. And in coordination with nymphs, Depot Bay, Cape Blanco and Orford Reef are not included in the proposed call areas. And we're looking forward to continuing our coordination with the state to further define rock reef habitat and exclude these large concentrations of rock reef habitat. With respect to submerged landforms, our current understanding of sea level rise and modeling the potential for locating intact submerged landform features, the proposed call areas avoid most of those potential features. And prior to approving any seafloor disturbing activities, archaeological surveys would be required to identify and avoid or minimize impacts for those potential features. So we've had heard from a number of, we've heard of a number of considerations from tribal members on offshore wind energy planning, including you shed concerns and the appointment, the importance of avoiding submerged landforms in addition to some of the other considerations that were already mentioned with respect to wildlife and habitat. At the part of our overall engagement effort, Boam invited invitation to a number of federally recognized tribes in Oregon, in Washington and Northern California on the topic of of offshore wind energy planning. And we had two two meetings with the one with the Koko Indian tribe and the other with the Confederated Tribes of the Coos, Lower Amquah and Sayu Sla Indians to discuss offshore wind energy planning. With respect to the Department of Defense, there is overlap with the proposed call areas and the DOD special use airspace. This is, there is ongoing coordination with Boam and the DOD siting clearinghouse. And with that, I'm going to pass the presentation over to Frank and Frank, I can continue to to drive the the slides when you say next slide. And so I'll discuss the some vessel traffic and fishing considerations.
Okay, and can you confirm you can hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. So yeah, go go ahead onto the the next slide, please. All right, so we'll cover this part pretty quick, but if this gets the idea across of a lot of the other slides we're going to look at. This one is vessel traffic. It's based on a AIS data, Automatic Information System. And it's data designed to keep ships from crashing into each other. It's like a air traffic control for for ships. And it's really good for some types of vessels and not not as good for others. It's a just required on vessels of a certain size. So in in the case of fishing, there's a lot of a the smaller fishing fleet that aren't required to have it. But just to give us an idea here of the the vessels, you can see where they all line up. Their tankers on the right that they tend to stay further out. Cargo ships start to clip through our our call areas there. There we're avoiding the inside, the busier lane on tugs and toes, but there is that other lane that kind of goes through and then that the all ships that, you know, just kind of lumps everything together. You can kind of see the fishing areas there. It gives you an idea that fishing is a a busy use in Oregon. Right, next, please. Now here, we'll start with the pictures and then we'll talk a bit about the words. The we'll go with the picture on the left there with all the lines on it. And here's how these this variety of data sets are created. And there's some variation in how you can create them, but just the the basic idea is we take the points from various data sets, turn them into lines, connect the points, turn them into tracks, put those tracks over our grid and just count the number of tracks that hit it. In the case of fishing for different fisheries, we decide if it's fishing or not based on speed is the common thing for VMS, one of the data sets I'll be talking about. But there's other data sets that are based on different inputs, things like logbook data, observer data where they actually know, okay, they are fishing here, they're not fishing there. So it's gives us a chance to compare those data sets. So that that's the left as we started with the the tracks and then we count them. And so then we can take that grid and we can symbolize it, you know, color the busier places. Point I like to get across here is that it's kind of a a living, breathing data set. We can look at it in a lot of different ways. You I symbolize it one way, but it's something to give us. We can take a lot of different views into this. You know, we can make whatever we want red. We can make whatever we want blue and it just gives us a way to analyze the data to really look at it in a lot of ways. Now to talk a bit about the words here. The this data set, the one that I was more involved in analyzing is VMS data, vessel monitoring system data. And what we'll be looking at here is fishing events, as I just mentioned. When the boats are slowing down to what we would consider fishing speeds, it varies by fishery. And so this is the fishing events each time a boat was fishing at that speed and it's a count of them. But we could be looking at different things and some of the data sets we'll be looking at do look at different things. And going forward in the future, we will be creating more data sets. So things like fishing events for non-VMS fisheries, we'll see a couple of those today, more are being created. Instead of fishing events and account of it, it could be kilometers fished per square kilometer. That's a a good, a good way to track fishing effort there. We could be looking at pots or the hours or the days fished or X vessel value. That's a little trickier to get to, but we're working on it with the various researchers. Other considerations for creating these data sets. One is the search area and the I already mentioned many different ways to symbolize. But you can say, I want to see where that track went and it hit my box. Or you could say, I want my box is going to search for fifty meters outside of here, five miles, whatever. You can have a variable search area to get to something. So just realize there's various ways to look at this and they all give us some good insights into the fishing effort. Next, please. So we're going to see several sides that look kind of like this. The idea on the the left, we have the table that shows the average of values of for all of Oregon for several years. And the key thing here is we just want to show the top several value fisheries. We're going to go down to Chinook salmon. That's the key there. That's, you know, the whole purpose of having that there. On the right, we'll have several maps of different data sets. Our first one, the crabber toe lanes. These are the toe lanes that have been created with, you know, the Coast Guard and a sea grant and both the tone industry and crab fishing industry. We're avoiding those areas. Well, you know, we'll still be talking with the folks about, you know, how good we're doing and if what tweaks may be needed. Then the the next one is the our VMS data set that we were talking about and comparing it to a data set created completely different by the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And different years created using different techniques, you know, using different data sets and analyzing them in different ways. Just, you know, it gives us confidence in how similar they they look. Basically, the the areas covered, the areas that are popping out as as busiest. We're liking that. And then on the the very far right is a very old older data set. But again, created in a very different way from actually going out and talking to to the the Dungeonist crab fishers and having them say where where they spend most of their time. Just nice that all these are kind of looking the same. Okay, next. Pink shrimp. Here we've got two data sets. We've got the VMS, the the one I spoke of. And then again, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, them creating a different data set. These, you know, it's overlapping years, but the Fish and Wildlife Department is a bigger collection of years, analyzed in a different way, different data set, both looking quite similar, you know, to of where is the fishing intensity the greatest. Right, next. Sablefish, this was a, you know, some of these, the way we try to get at different fisheries and things. It's it gets tricky sometimes because the data set might not be where you know, where you have your geospatial information might not be the same of the precise fishery you're trying to look at. So we've got to bring in a variety of data sets to kind of get some insight into this. Here you'll see we've got the the two VMS, you know, there's the various groundfish data sets as well as the the bottom trawl data sets that we've brought all together and comparing them to different Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife data sets. One of the big differences in how the VMS and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife data sets were created. Yes, definitely different data sets going in, but the analysis, we talked a bit about the the search area. Their search area was was quite a bit larger than ours. Ours was basically none. Did the the track hit the the box there? It's had a bigger search area. So kind of the the different look you get from it, but still a general idea, the hot spots are generally the the busiest places. And obviously, we can see we've got some pretty real fishing effort taking place in our caller is that we'll be we'll be speaking with folks about and, you know, considering this and seeing how we take it going forward as we move forward from call areas to wind energy areas. Right, next, please. Pacific whiting. Here's our our VMS again to the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife data set. Similar here, you know, we've got definitely got fishing taking place in the the call areas and we'll be considering it moving forward. Same situation with the larger search area for the Oregon data set. But you can tell the busy areas are are where they are. Okay, next. So right, okay, yeah, all right, that's a, excuse me, I got confused here. We moved one forward. This the whole purpose of this one is again to look at comparing different data sets created different ways. This is particularly looking at whiting. We have several different whiting data sets in our VMS. This is one of them. This is the mothership data set. We've also got shore-based whiting fishery and the catch and processor data sets. But this is just one of them. We're still working on analyzing the others. Idea, you see VMS and you see Fram, that's NOAA data from the Fisheries Resource Analysis and Monitoring folks. Get created in a very different way. They're using observer data and logbook data. We're using the VMS data. Just happy to see, once we busted out in the same years, how similar they look. That's, you know, it's giving both us and the folks that know more confidence in our data sets. It's nice to see two different created data sets look this similar. Next. And the Albacore fishing data, this, we don't have anything that good in the the VMS for this. So that we're depending on the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife data for this. On the right, we've got the commercial and on the left, the charter vessels. There's obviously hotspots further further north, more so there's fishing in the call areas, but it's definitely busier more north. Right, next. And this is my last one. This is a for Chinook salmon. We've just got the VMS data set. Hopefully, we'll be able to get more as we move forward. And on this point, you know, before we move on, I would was hoping to have another slide here. I didn't get a chance to get it in. But, you know, these are the some of the key data sets. We've got more. We're working on creating more all the time. We've got a collaboration going that we've started with them with NOAA and the Pacific States Marine Fisheries Commission. Looking into, they've got access to a lot of data sets that that we don't. So we're starting that that collaboration in some of those things I mentioned early on, creating data sets from newer data, creating data sets from different data sets and, you know, different year classes to help us have you visions into the different fisheries using different data sets and to just keep building our data going forward. And yeah, different views into into the fisheries. So with that, I think that's it for me. And if you can go to the next one, Whitney, if that's it, I will sign off and we'll go back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I I wanted to provide a sort of a summary slide of our both our guiding principles. And and again, the map of the proposed call areas. And again, the the call for information nominations is that first start of our planning. And we look forward to to continue refining those areas in the in the area identification phase. I'm sure there may be, well, I I am assuming there's some on the call that are curious about our proposed schedule and how we're moving forward. The U.S. Department of Interior released an offshore wind leasing path forward last October, which outlined a leasing strategy for offshore wind in the United States. And Oregon is included in that leasing path forward. In that document, there are two key milestones. One is in the fall of of this year in twenty twenty-two, and that is the wind energy area or WEA designation. And then in the following year, in the fall of twenty twenty-three, proposing a an auction or that lease sale. And there is a a lot of work to do between between today and and then. So we discussed the sort of the next step is for Boam to publish the Oregon call and and we anticipate that to happen shortly. So, you know, I'll detail that a little bit more in the next slide, but coming up, you know, this month or early next. And then we work into that area identification phase in order to do the wind energy area designation. With that designation, the environmental review of those areas begins. And then in twenty twenty-three, the other activities from our office include a proposed sale notice, the final sale notice, and of course, the environmental review would have to be completed prior to any auction. There are also opportunities for public comment, and these are the the formal public comment opportunities as defined in our regulations. So that comes with the the call itself as well as with the environmental review process after the the WEA designation. And then again, with the proposed sale notice. And then there are other opportunities for engagement as well, other task force meetings and so on. So our anticipated next steps in the in the near term. Certainly, today is a is a is a great milestone is is with this joint meeting with the Pacific Fishery Management Council. And as I was mentioning, by the end of this month or perhaps more likely early April, Boam would issue the call in the Federal Register and that would trigger the that public comment period and comment for, again, that's the nomination of interest for commercial offshore wind energy development. And then soliciting input and feedback on the any considerations in or around the the call areas with respect to environmental considerations, existing uses or or so on. After the after the call is issued, we begin that area identification to identify wind energy areas and look forward to our continued coordination with the state and and to continue engagement with potentially interested and affected parties. And obviously, the the fishing community fishing community is a is a big part of that work. So this is my last substantive slide as we anticipate our continued engagement with the fishing community. On the left side, you know, after that call, we want to continue to collect data and information to inform the the from the providing input on those call areas to inform future decision. And we've had a few discussions today on how to have more meaningful engagement in our process and have heard the the request. And I think it's a good idea to have focused engagement with specific fishing sectors. And we're open to to ideas and dialogue and look forward to the feedback today on what that might look like. I've proposed on the on the right side, some potential fishing sector meetings targeting after the once the call is issued, trying to understand some commonalities to to have, you know, that that dialogue and dialed in feedback based on specific sectors. So, for example, we could have publicly public meetings to target those that are, you know, work and fish for Pacific whiting, another for pink shrimp and groundfish trawl, a third with the Dungeness crab fishers, a fourth with salmon and tuna, and then, you know, a sort of a last catch-all meeting, understanding that that there are other concerns or ideas out there and to be able to have a meeting in order to to receive to receive those comments. We have heard the the request to have listening sessions on these call areas offshore Oregon, and that these meetings could be a venue to receive public comment, and they could be formal public comments after the call is issued. And we'd like to have these meetings in person as as we begin to work towards the the in in-office environment, although have also heard the feedback that that there's a preference for for virtual meetings as that allows for more people to be able to to participate participate in a meeting that may not otherwise be able to to travel. So as Doug mentioned in his opening remarks, we we want the fishing community and offshore wind development to to coexist. And, you know, we've had a number of of meetings. We're we're committed to transparency and open and honest communication. And we're looking for for feedback on on how to move forward. You know, we've had one-on-one meetings or small group meetings suggesting these public meetings. And I think with that, I'll I'll close out this presentation and look forward to the the discussion later this afternoon. I just want to provide some contact information on these slides. And in bold, I have the the staff that are on the call today and and happy to for the for the Q and A and the discussion later later on. Again, that's Doug Boren, Rick Yard, Nessie Sumit, Jen Miller, myself, and Frank Pendleton. And then I've also listed the contact information with Lisa Gilbane. She's the Environmental Analysis Section Chief, as well as Abigail Ryder, who is a ANEPA Coordinator and focusing on Oregon activities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Whitney. Thank you, Frank. I think unless Susan and Mike have other ideas, why don't we move straight on to Andy Lanier's presentation, and then we can move on to discussion after that. Susan and Mike, Boam, does that sound okay to you?
Good to meet you, Gary.
Okay, it's all yours, Andy. I see your screen.
Great. And can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Andy Lanier. I'm the Marine Affairs Coordinator. And as Whitney mentioned, I've been the state counterpart to help staff the task force. So I believe I've been in front of this group once before, introducing the Aura Windmap tool. And I just wanted to briefly remind everybody that as a part of our engagement in the state has partnered with Boam to try and gather as much information as we could about the human uses, the natural resources and the physical setting out on Oregon's outer continental shelf, and to curate that into a single catalog in the data visualization tool. In doing so, we have scoured catalogs, archives of our own catalogs across the internet and with our federal partners. And I just want to take a moment out to thank everyone who is providing services, to thank staff who've reached out to us to inform us about additional information resources to add to our catalog. And I think it really has made an incredible difference because we have a very comprehensive set of information that we've been able to curate into a single tool and catalog. Today, my intent is to provide you with a brief update on some of the work that we've done. You heard Whitney mention that the data gathering and engagement plan. As a part of that effort, we heard loud and clear, and we had our catalog reviewed through public webinars. And we have taken action to find those additional resources that that folks have identified. And we've also heard of the desire for increased functionality on the tool, which I'm happy to report, we were able to make some changes on. And there's now a new version of the Aura Windmap tool that has some features that I think will be helpful for commenting on this process and for communications about areas and concerns with associated with offshore wind. So I'm going to walk through briefly some of those new features and demonstrate those as well as some of the new layers that have been added since the task force last met in October of 2021. So one of the first things you'll notice, and forgive me, I'm hearing a little bit of a background noise. Somebody's not on mute. If you could check your mute button, please. So you will see a few of the areas that I've highlighted and read here are kind of highlight the new features available in Aura Windmap. The first thing you'll notice is there's actually a little menu bar up on top of the mapping interface that allows access to some of those features. In addition, on the left side, where you would view the data that's available in the data catalog, there's now additional functionality associated with the ability to create a user account. And there will be additional tools available on the right side of the the tool available in that little vertical toolbar. So one of the first things that we did is, in creating the tool, we we developed a complimentary data catalog that allows you to to browse the data. And we've incorporated that catalog directly into the Aura Windmap tool here, which is available from the About area of the menu. Similar to how it was hosted directly on the portal, there's a listing of the major thematic categories of data and information. And additionally, we have put some time and effort into making it possible for those who want to view the curated catalog of information in their own GIS catalogs. We've created downloads of our layer references. So if you are a GIS user or know somebody who who likes to use GIS, if you click on the download link on the bottom of the page, you will you'll get the curated catalog and all of the references to the the service layers. Here's an example map demonstrating the biological theme of information. As the catalog itself has more than 340 layers and growing, we actually had to subset the ArcMap files into specific thematic versions. But the takeaway messages, you can can now access and utilize the information on your own systems if that is something that you like to do. Moving now over to some of the new features, we have created the ability to have a user account and a login, which, when you do log in, will allow you to access additional functionality, probably the most important of which are going to be the ability to create and store bookmarks, which I'll talk a little bit more about, but also the ability to draw features on a map. The the user accounts can then be, if you'd like, associated with groups, which allow sharing to a broader audience. In this instance, I've opened up the catalog viewer and zoomed the the map into Kus Bay. And the main point here is that you can not only bookmark a spatial extent. So if if I link this, it will directly take me back. But you can also bookmark the layers that you've identified and the customization of the view that you've created through kind of the already existing ability to manipulate those in the Aura Windmap tool. So here's an effort or a bookmark that I created that highlights all of the new data that our Department of Fish and Wildlife produced, following the task force meeting. And, you know, addressing the data gaps that they noticed and and could address directly in response to the summary catalog that we put together. As I mentioned, the ability to to draw a shape on the mapper or an annotation, if you will, is something that we thought would be very useful for engagement in process and being able to provide comments. And so, once you're logged in, there's a tool on the toolbar on the right that allows you to access the the drawing interface. You can draw an area, a line, or a point on the map, whichever you'd like to be able to annotate or communicate a message about a feature of the map that or the data set that you want to highlight. Here is a couple of nonsensical shapes drawn on the map to indicate, you know, that you can do that. They all come in at this color. But the point is, you can store the extent you can draw on the map, and those will be valuable functions for being able to communicate messages or ideas relative to the information that's in the catalog. As I mentioned, users that are logged in will have the ability to join groups. And those groups are important because joining some of the groups will allow you to then be able to see maps that others have shared with that group. I've created a public map gallery that's mostly empty now, but I think will grow over time. Others have also created groups that they can use to communicate and collaborate with members of of their community. So not everything has to be shared publicly. Switching over now to some of the new data layers that were added to the catalog since October. And again, we thank everyone for the comments about data sets that we missed in our first go around or data sets that newly became available. So some of those were related to marine mammal data, specifically humpback whale, critical habitats, as well as critical habitats for killer whales. And probably the biggest expansion of our catalog was in fishing-related data. Boam already discussed and presented some of the information that they were able to produce in their in the analysis of their vessel monitoring systems. There's the complete list of layers that they produced as a part of that effort, in addition to the layers that our Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife produced from their We also received comments about a number of layers of information that were generated in support of the groundfish essential habitat fish synthesis process, which occurred back in 2013. Some of our commenters thought that those fisheries predicted occurrence maps would be valuable. And so there's a number of layers that were added. And and all of the the newly added layers of information were included in a list in the data portal update to the council, which is included on the Boam website page. And lastly, when the call areas were released, we added them to Aura Windmap so that you all can pick and choose the layers of information that you'd like to overlay to learn more about the the call areas. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll turn it back over to you. Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, thanks, Andy. I appreciate that. Doing a quick time check here. What I would propose, and I'll look to the chairs and to the Boam principals also, but I propose that we move into our next agenda item, which is questions and discussion. I know some people have questions about the presentations they just heard. And depending on how long that goes, you know, we might need to take a break from that. Somewhere in here, we want to get a 15-minute break. Maybe we'll make that a 10-minute break instead, since we're a little bit behind now. But if that's okay with you all, then then let's start with questions and and discussion. And as a reminder, we will, yeah, I see one. Thank you. Yeah, please use the raise hand feature. And what we're going to do is because this is a Marine Planning Committee meeting, we're giving preference to the Marine Planning Committee members who are on the call. You all should be promoted to panelists. And so you can mute and unmute yourselves. I'll take another look at the attendees to see if there's anyone else who still still needs to get elevated to panelist. And the the idea behind the Marine Planning Committee, for those of you who aren't intimately familiar with the council process, is that most of these are representatives of different sectors of fishing, the fishing community and stakeholders. And so the idea is that, you know, they are able to, you know, compile and represent a lot of the key questions and issues, you know, in the fishery community. So hopefully, they will be able to ask and will ask questions that you that the the rest of the attendees may have in mind. But anyway, we're going to go to them first and 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 then we'll also recognize other attendees as time allows. So unless I hear anyone object to that plan, I would propose moving ahead. And Susan and I are keeping track of the hands raised, and we have a little plan for that, which I'm going to go to now. Thank you. So hearing no objections, why don't we start out with Yvonne de Ranyé, and then we'll go to Delia.
Hi, thank you, Carrie. Thanks, everyone. So I just wanted to check when Frank Pendleton was giving his presentation, he was talking about where some of the different data sets came from. And there are going to be a lot of members of the fishing community on this call who are part of those data collection processes. And so I think I understood which data sets you were using and which agencies they were coming from, but it wasn't always completely clear. So if there are questions from the fishing industry later about what data you're using, maybe there there might be some. Oh, I don't know, backtracking to talk about making sure that everyone's talking about the day same data set. So just a heads up on that. Thanks.
Okay, so I think that was more of a comment than a question, unless you were looking for a response from Frank.
No, I wasn't sure whether it would be a question or a comment. So thank you for allowing me to comment instead of question.
Sure thing. Thank you. Okay, next up is Delia, and then we'll go to Corey Niles.
Great. Thanks for the presentation today. My question has to do with, we're starting to see a correlation between the gigawatt capacity of of these areas and the spatial extent of these areas. The 17 gigawatts corresponding to roughly 2,200 square miles, Brandon and Brookings both close to Bandon and Brookings both close to that three gigawatt area. So my question is, when we, when we, if we're looking for three gigawatts, how much area are we looking for there? If it's a direct correlation in that equation, it would be roughly 385 square miles. Is that an accurate depiction of the goal? Or is there a different spatial extent that we should be considering if we're if we're looking for an initial area to provide for up to three, three gigawatts?
Hi, Delia. Thanks for the question. This is Whitney Howard. I can take a first step at that response and that the the parameter used in terms of understanding sort of the power density to evaluate capacity, the power density is three megawatts per square kilometer. And that is of sort of a rule of thumb for being able to understand the capacity in in that area. But the it's more of this back of the envelope because when we are further down in this process and if there is, say, a lease is awarded and the developer is finding and collecting or or gathering new data on that area, they would be doing sort of the a specific wind resource assessment to be able to understand that that density and then the the estimated power capacity for that area. So I I wouldn't expect that that three megawatts per square kilometer maybe to be the the same further down the road. It's really right now was we're trying to initiate planning and and understanding that area. And so that's sort of one, one aspect of it. The other piece to say is that you know, we're, we're aligning to look at for sort of near term commercial development of of three gigawatts. But you know what? That could be at the project phase, not you know, as as we walk through bones authorization process, the coal area, the wind energy area, the lease area, and then a proposed project within the lease area and and so on. So I I'm having a hard time answering that question in in full because it's, you know, at the for offshore wind development, it's the the final construction operations plan and that project that that would provide the what that area would be within the lease area.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Whitney. I completely can appreciate that it's it's too soon to get down to a a nitty gritty number, but but I think bringing it down from that 17 gigawatts, 2,200 square miles to something that would help commenters provide you with kind of a more, a more practical response to to what, you know, what what we're actually looking for here. That's that's all I'm asking for is, you know, how much area, you know, does bone see being necessary to move into the WEA stage? So.
You know, thanks, Delia. And this is Doug. Just wanted to add on to a little bit of what Whitney said. You know, you're right. I I think that is a good perspective to bring to the discussion is, you know, obviously, and and this was our intent, we have much larger areas than what we're going to end up with at the end of the process. And I think, you know, like Whitney said, we don't have an exact calculation because we don't know, we haven't ran through the process. But I think in general terms and to get what you were pointing out for us, Delia, is that we're large and we're going smaller and, you know, roughly proportional from 17 gigawatts that we have identified down now down to three gigawatts is kind of the way that we're looking at this moving forward.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you both, Whitney and Doug. Next up is Corey Niles and then we'll go to Mike Okineski.
Thanks, Kerry, and and thanks, everyone, for the presentations. This is Corey Niles from WDFW. For those who don't know me, a member of the of the committee here. Yeah, my first question was pretty much the same as Delia's and I I don't, I think, you know, 17 is about five, 5.6, 5.7 times bigger than three. But so you could technically get three, you know, the area could be about 18, 20%. It could be 18 to 20% of what it is now to get three gigawatts, but it sounds like it's it's not that simple of 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 a math. But I agree, I'll just echo what Delia said. I think that would help focus comments on what what the what the goal for the the wind energy areas would be. I guess my my related question then is, and I was not following the task force at all, so I would be surprised, no matter what, just for not having tracked. But I was surprised to see all the areas end up in in southern Oregon. And I guess the way, Whitney, that you described it here was that the cost effectiveness to wind energy industry really was what you all were looking at. I guess I was assuming it'd be more of a where is the most, the least impactful, the way I've heard you all talk about it in the past is looking at Oregon's planning area as a whole. Where would be? Where would you get the wind energy while also balancing? For, you know, we're focused on fishing here primarily, but the the least cost to fishing, which looks like you tried to do, but the fact that they all ended up in in South Central Oregon in in those communities would be disproportionately affected. I guess I guess it ended up differently than I than I thought you would, you all talked about, but maybe could you, you know, go just paraphrase again how you how you weighed that and and maybe a misunderstanding how you approached it, but it's putting all these these areas in in one part of the coast. And again, I think that you said that's just where the wind is was strongest and and least costly to put.
Oh, go ahead, Doug.
Right. And and Whitney can probably add more. And I think to, you know, Corey, you know, and and maybe we can't talk about a little bit more is, you know, one of the factors that we took into consideration is, you know, where the wind blows and where the transmission is and, you know, the least cost. So that that is a consideration that we took. And, you know, at the same time, you know, there were still impacts, you know, to the north. So I I think that, you know, I mean, I I think the way that we looked at it is, you know, there's, you know, different things that we took into consideration for sure. And I think where we landed, you know, this was the most prospective area and and too, I think, you know, if you look at three gigawatts, you know, with the goal of Oregon, you know, where's kind of the lowest hanging fruit, maybe? And, you know, maybe in the North Coast and other areas, you know, if Oregon were to decide that they needed three, more than three gigawatts in the future, you know, like future assessment of additional areas, you know, we could, we could move on that. And just wanted to ask if Whitney had anything else to add.
No, I think you covered it. Thank you, Doug.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Greg Shaughnessy, we're going to go to you and then we'll come back to our other panelists, if that's all right. So let me make sure that you you should be able to speak, Greg.
Okay, thank you. My name is Greg Shaughnessy. I'm with Ocean Gold Seafoods and West Coast Palagic Conservation Group. In today's one minute, I want to cover NOAA fishery surveys along the US West Coast. Two of our nation's fishery science centers conduct federal surveys of these waters. The Northwest Fishery Science Center conducts multiple missions, including Hake. And West Coast Palagic has partnered with the Southwest Science Center in their ATM survey focusing on CPS. NOAA surveys have established solid baselines that help us understand the true state of the ocean environment and nature. As I look at the survey protocols, I count 17 individual PRANSEC lines that the Ribbon Lasker runs. And these go right through the call areas. These are important, repeatable data points that inform our stock assessment reports. Losing survey access to these areas creates big gaps in the data. And this introduces the scariest part of these important surveys, and that would be uncertainty. So please explain to me how you will not sacrifice our scientific security and the ability to collect data and to continue to produce these quality stock assessment reports. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Shaughnessy. This is Rick Yard, Office of Environment with Boom. And it's the first time I spoke, so I'll just confirm you're hearing me. It looks like my mic's working.
Yep, we hear you.
All right. Thank you, Kerry. So thank you for the question about the the surveys. I think that I'm going to focus my response on the fact that we have established some regular really great working communications with the NOAA Fisheries on the West Coast leadership and have opportunities regularly. We meet formally at least once a month, but we talk more than that to talk through issues. And one of them that has come up is the surveys that you mentioned. We are aware, we appreciate that the call areas identified continue to present some things for us to to discuss about surveys. But I want to point out we were deliberate when we were working on these call areas to consider what we already knew. We did receive a formal letter, for example, from NIMPs identifying these issues and pointing out some pretty important survey areas. Excuse me, the Newport Hydrograph and those were not included in the call areas for now. So to sum up, yeah, I want to acknowledge the issue and thank you for raising it. I think that we are on track to continue our discussions with NIMPs to address any impacts to the service.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Greg. Next up, Mike Okineski. Sorry, Mike, I I had you on deck. You're you're up now in the batter's box and then Scott McMullin.
Yeah, no worries, Kerry. I've got at least five questions I can think of, but we started out with an easy one or should be easy. And that is, what size wind turbines are you utilizing? I guess plotting into your characteristic of whatever it is, three gigawatts or three kilowatts per square or seven tenths of a square kilometer, whatever it is. So that's one. Kerry, you want me to? How many do I get here?
Well, I hadn't anticipated that question. Five is probably too many. Why don't we start with two and then let other people take a swing at it?
Okay, well, let's see if we can answer that one first.
And this is Doug, and I'll just say, Mike, you know, it would be easier for the Boom team, I think, if we answered them one at a time. So if that's okay, we we can do that.
Yeah, that's that's exactly what I was going to ask or trying to ask. I think to get through one before we go to the other, but if I can get two, I know my limit's at this stage.
Well, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, Mike. And I can say on the first one, you know, we I'll say that right now it looks like the industry is going to be at a 15-megawatt turbine, but you never know what it's going to look like because, you know, three years ago, we were talking maybe 10-megawatt turbines. So three years from now, it could be 20. So that calculation is strictly just the three megawatts per square kilometer, which is it's independent of a turbine size. So that's just our our rough guess. So I really can't say, and we wouldn't know in officially until the construction operation plan came in, you know, if there was a less C with the lease out there. So I
A follow-up comment would be if I took 17 gigawatts, figured out square miles per and went backwards to make it into kilometers, I could figure it out that way, right?
Well, I think that I've, and I'll just say, three megawatts per square kilometer, but I also think it's one gigawatt per, I think it's 126 square miles, roughly about there. If that makes it easier to visualize. But it's still of the turbine size that would be on the project site.
So I've heard that you have discretion, I guess it is, or just working through the process that you would I've heard this idea about downsizing the amount of area you'd actually use. And I can understand the logic behind what you're saying, but if you have that ability to downsize, can you upsize?
Not without going out with additional call areas. So these call areas, once they're out there, we cannot go larger without an additional call. That's the boom practice that we've done from since we started on the East Coast with the planning process.
Okay, that's my two.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Let's go on to Scott McMullin and then Mike Conroy.
Thank you, Scott McMullin, Marine Planning Committee. Whitney, thank you for these slides and your informative presentation. My question concerns the the sites on the coast able to receive power. And if I remember the slide that you showed, if I remember correctly, it looked like about 1,550 megawatts or 1.55 gigawatts would be able to be received on the South Oregon coast. So the question is, why are we looking at three gigawatts if there's no areas on the South Coast that can receive a total of three gigawatts? Question really is, is is there an expectation that ratepayers will have to build a receiver to to take the additional capacity? Or how are, why are we looking at three gigawatts?
So Scott, this is Whitney. Thanks. Thanks for the question. I think the one aspect or one way to answer is that in Bones authorization process is is providing access for offshore wind energy in federal waters. And the question that you raised is a is an important one, and it's outside of Bones process. And so it, the the discussion of offshore wind, you know, that that power generated and how it is interconnected and where it's interconnected is is a is a larger discussion and and one that really involves the the state. So I think that Bones' planning process and Bones authorization process is is a long one, and we're just initiating this planning process and future transmission upgrades or other upgrades that are required for offshore wind energy development is still is still unknown. And and I think that you know, there there'll be other discussions to try to to try to adapt, try to address, I think, what you're what you're asking in in terms of how much, where that power would be received and how much of that power could be received in terms of any infrastructure upgrades that would be required.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Whitney. Let's go to Mike Conroy and then back to Corey Niles.
Yeah, thanks, Kerry, and thanks, Whitney, and everyone else for the presentation. I I think I have a simple question that should be relatively easy to answer. You know, on the the draft EA for the Humboldt wind energy area, you you got some comments that requested and suggested a programmatic EIS be undertaken to look at offshore wind off the West Coast. You know, seeing the collar is off Oregon and operating under the assumption that, you know, you guys aren't done yet off Oregon, California, potentially off Washington. Is there a thought from Baum to undertake the process of doing a PEIS to kind of address all of these concerns at once rather than the piecemeal approach being used thus far?
This is, thank you, Mike. This is Rick Yard, again, Office of Environment. I I think it was the task force where we talked about this a little bit too, but some some prior meetings. So my answer may sound familiar, but we are always, we often hear comments about doing a programmatic EIS. We're always open to hearing those and we do and have engaged in lots of internal conversations about relative merits of an approach like that. Boom has not yet and currently has enough plans to undertake a programmatic EIS prior to leasing. BOM has not yet and currently has enough plans to undertake a programmatic EIS prior to leasing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Corey Niles. And then we'll go to, yeah, sorry, Yelena Nowak.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie. And maybe this is a question for Whitney, maybe a smaller picture question. You mentioned like avoiding heck of a bank, for example, because of a lot of rocky habitats there. One topic that's come up in this group is, you know, somewhat counterintuitively, you know, the surface area that these projects would take up is very large, but the footprint on the seafloor, you know, I don't know what the anchor looks like, but would be considerably smaller. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of curious. I'm wondering, you know, like we might have a square mile of surface area in the ocean. And, you know, in 10% of the seafloor underneath could be rocky habitats. And, you know, we typically want to, you know, keep our fisheries, like the fisheries that would be most affected by these developments out of rocky habitats anyway. Bottom trawl and essential fish habitat closures being an example. So what is your thoughts on being able to anchor these? And, you know, if certain reefs are, you know, surrounded by sandy areas, do we have any idea how precisely the anchors could be set? You know, over an area that has some rocks in it, but, you know, a lot of soft substrates as well. If that's too much in the weeds, fair enough, but it has come up in this group before about the avoidance of rocky habitat and, you know, the relatively small footprint on the seafloor that these projects would have. And again, not having participated in the task force, if it was a thorough, we discussed there, then I can connect with my colleagues offline and get updated. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Thanks for the question. This is Whitney Howard, and that question wasn't asked with the task force meeting, so it's a welcomed one. The, where we are right now in trying to identify areas most suitable for leasing, we're taking the information that we have and, you know, in working with the state, trying to identify, you know, which data sets and how to define rock reef habitat and removing these large concentrations for, you know, away in the area identification stage. So that's what we're looking forward to do in the near term. I think the question that you're asking in terms of anchor placement, it is a good one. It's just that after, you know, in BOM's process, after lease issuance, the less C has to do site assessment and site characterization. And that includes geophysical and geotechnical surveys of that area to understand at a higher resolution what exactly that seafloor looks like. And from there to propose a site, a project within that area, you know, the anchors and any anchoring system. And in addition, not part of the question, but the submarine cable, you know, it is, it is in everyone's interest to avoid rocky areas. And so the question of where the actual location would be of the any anchoring system or submarine cable is addressed after the less C, the developer knows all of the site information to be able to evaluate project sighting.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay, let's go now to Yelena Nowak, I think is a better pronunciation. You can correct me and then we'll go to Steve Scheiblauer. Oh, I might have to unmute. Yelena, bear with me. Where did you go, Yelena? There you are. Okay, you ah, shoot. Okay, you okay, you should be able to speak now, Yelena. You might have to unmute yourself, but you should be able to do that. Can't hear you, Yelena. I did, oh, is that you, Yelena? Can hear someone. Okay, Yelena, I don't know if that was you. You should be able to unmute yourself. Let's move on to Steve Scheiblauer and then we'll come back to you, Yelena.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to go back to Mike Conroy's great question about the programmatic EIS. And the answer we heard was there'd been discussion about that and the answer was, was no, that BOM is not interested in doing that right now. I just wonder if BOM can characterize a little more fully to us about the discussions that led to the no answer.
Sure. I should have done that in the first place, I think, Steve. Thank you for the opportunity to explain more fully. I got to the note pretty quickly. I, you know, I was just trying to point out, we do hear this comment regularly. So I just wanted everybody to know that we are acknowledging, we do hear it and we have talked about it since we get to questions so much to make sure that we have thought it through and know what we're doing. So that's why I got to the note really quickly, but to expand to answer your question about reasoning. So, you know, the BOM process is, as you are all aware by now or discovering is phased and it has been set up in a manner that I think is our common understanding is that it was meant to be able to get leases issued, to get less fees in place so that there are parties available to assist in the gathering of lots of expensive data and proposing plans that would ultimately be reviewed at these early stages when we're thinking about leasing. BOM does itself the sort of early planning process and publishing of the calls and working on the wind energy area through area identification. And those processes are all a very specific kind of process about a site. So I can understand, and like I said, we do get this question. So I can understand people saying if you do have sites near each other, like we have three calls areas in Oregon right now. Why do you not do a programmatic EIS or programmatic NEPA document? I do understand that. And, you know, that's something that we always think about. And I don't know today whether we will have one or two or three or whatever number of NEPA documents for leasing at the area identification stage. But I do expect there are going to be environmental assessments. And the reason is because the scope of our EAs at the leasing stage is largely directed towards site assessment, site characterization, which is an information gathering process. And we have, I'm going to guess now, so don't quote me on this, but more than a dozen, probably less than 20 environmental assessments on the BOM what page now about lease issuance. We do those. We have done those on leasing every time. We've never done an EIS. And we've never found significant environmental impacts related to those activities that are within the scope of the documents. An EIS would then not provide more information about potential impacts. It could, I suppose, provide a slightly different process that might include maybe one more additional stage of review of a document with public comment. But, you know, that's what what I mean is, we do know that there are some merits to different processes to consider, and that's why we have talked about it. But we have never concluded that an EIS is necessary and never decided that it is the process we want to follow at leasing. Like I said, we've done programmatic documents and programmatic environmental assessments. And I wouldn't say we wouldn't do a programmatic environmental assessment about Oregon. I don't know. We'll talk about the merits of that too, but we've never found an EIS to be necessary at the least stage. So hopefully that expansion of the reasoning about EIS is more helpful.
Thank you, Rick. Have we had any luck with Yelena yet? Okay, that's all right. We're not going to give up, Yelena. Or, you know, if you want to just type your question in, you can do that too, but we have a little bit more time on this agenda item. Speaking of typing questions in the chat, I wanted to remind everyone that we prefer to keep questions out of the chat just because it's a little bit hard to, you know, keep track of, you know, the verbal discussion and then the chat discussion. If we have time, we'll get to those. I see that a couple have been posted there. I would also suggest that, you know, for, in this case, and for any other questions that people have that, you know, don't get answered today for whatever reason, or you think of something later at the end of the slide presentation that Whitney gave and Frank, there were a whole list of email addresses and contacts. And those slides or something extremely similar are posted to the BOM Oregon Renewable Energy Task Force page. And we will post today's slide presentation to the council's webpage, this meeting webpage. So, so all those contacts and emails are there. And maybe we'll put them up at the end of this meeting today also. So anyway, if we have time, we'll get to those questions in the chat. But first, we're going to stick with the verbal questions. And, you know, and Yelena, if you're able to unmute, go ahead and speak up. Otherwise, we'll just keep going on, but we'll circle back to you. So let's go to Steve, I think, is your hand back up? Or? No, I think your hand is down. Oh, okay, got it. Thank you. Sorry about that. Steve Jonah, we're going to go to you first and then we will go to John Gonzalez. So Steve Jonah, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, thanks. I noticed I didn't type my name in. I had to log in two or three times before I realized that I needed to be promoted to a participant or to see the controls. So I'm Steve Jonah with the Makah tribe. I'm a member of the MPC as well as the Civic Council Groundfish Advisory Panel. And so my question is a follow-up on the previous conversation about the programmatic EIS. The Makah tribe and the other treaty tribes on the Washington coast are really concerned about the cumulative impacts that the total number of wind power sites will have on the California current. And that goes into areas such as, you know, can it and will it impact upwelling? What does it do for migration of forage fish, for marine mammals, for target species and so on? And so I don't know if that would be addressed in a programmatic coastwide EIS, but that's our concern. And we're not so concerned about specific lease areas or sites. Those aren't directly impacting the fishing opportunity of the Washington tribes. But we do believe that there is some concern about, again, the cumulative impact that this has on the California current. So, again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting any specific action other than we do believe that the appropriate action is necessary. So, thank you.
I'm going to say, I think that was mostly a comment and thank you for that, sir. But I want to respond in at least one small way to say that to let everyone know that in addition to our environmental analysis process, we do also have a really quite large and I think really notable environmental studies program. And we often, well, we're always funding new studies. We usually have roughly 20 going at once, a large portfolio. And we do always consider, you know, topics for new studies to publish. And we do consider issues such as, you know, sort of coastwide, larger environmental, potential environmental impacts issues. So it's just one more avenue that we might use to get at questions like that, that I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of. But again, thank you for that comment, sir.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Rick. John Gonzalez, you're up next, and then let's go to Karen Braby. Oh, and oops, oh shit. Where did you go, John?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to comment. Carrie, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Excellent. This is a question I've heard asked by a couple industry reps and even heard it brought up on the task force meeting last week. But since I haven't heard a clear answer, I just wanted to ask BOM if there is any interest or any appetite or ability for you folks to delay the timeline. And specifically, I'm referencing the timeline between now and the actual lease auctions, which I believe is roughly two years or so. But just wondering if you would be able to delay the timeline just to allow for some more thoughtful outreach with the industry and data gathering and even maybe possibly extending public comment periods to be longer. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, John. And this is Doug, and I'll say that, you know, I kind of repeat the answer that I gave in the task force meeting is that I'll say that, you know, the timeline is not set in stone. So, you know, we do have some flexibility in there with how we can move forward. And obviously, we're going to, I mean, we strive to make sure that we do the coordination and the collaboration and make sure that we get the information data that we need to make our decisions. So, you know, and I'll say that, you know, there's flexibility in our, you know, comment periods on all our NEPA doc, I mean, on all our documents that we go out with, you know, and I can say, well, I won't commit to it, but I can say we're looking at having a longer comment period for the call than what's required by regulation. Because, you know, we know that it's important to do that. So I think that I just wanted to reiterate, you know, the timeline that's out there, you know, the planned path forward is not necessarily set in stone, that there is flexibility in there. But at the same time, we are, you know, striving to, you know, make the areas available to, you know, support things moving forward and making areas available for offshore wind on the West Coast.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Rick. Okay, time check. We have about seven minutes left in this agenda item. We're doing pretty well, but we still have a bunch of hands up. So let's see how far we can get here. So Karen Braby, you're up next and then let's go to, well, Yelena, if she's available. And if not, then we'll go to Heather Mann. So Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks to the MPC, to council staff for hosting this meeting and BOM for the presentations, Andy for the presentations. For those who don't know me, I'm a council member for Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and really an active part of this discussion and collaboration on trying to sustain our fisheries and protect uses as well as make room for offshore wind in the future as we need to and as is appropriate and responsible development. So with that in mind and kind of building off of some of the discussion today, Doug, I really appreciate your thoughts about the timeline we've heard today and certainly at the task force meeting last Friday about a lot of issues that are unresolved at this point. And certainly will need significant attention and time to resolve those. And certainly will need significant attention and time to resolve those. The ocean is a busy place, as Whitney and Frank well described. And we need the time to figure out how to responsibly minimize impacts on arguably one of the biggest uses of our ocean right now, which is our fisheries. So thinking about a small-ish lease area, it's all relative, but a small-ish lease area that is not connected to other leases. We have Humboldt Bay, we have Morro Bay in California, and now we're considering sites in Oregon. A single leasee being responsible for describing impacts of their system, their turbines, their anchoring, assessment of their site, and whether it's impact or no impact seems really like a heavy burden on that leasee. And in fact, is kind of the reverse of where you would hope to put that burden in terms of governance. Saying a little more simply, in my view, government should be deciding where is a reasonable place to put these sites and what's reasonable to do with that site, rather than putting the burden on the leasee who has every interest in saying that there's no impact and that their site is a great place for development and their plans for that development have no impact. So I'm hoping that you can maybe provide some comments about that problematic aspect of the planning process. It's a hard question, so, you know, I apologize for putting you in a tight spot, but it is something that's on everybody's mind, and we really need to kind of get at that and how to protect the current uses, the ecosystem services that we have by making it in our best interest and the leasees' best interest to minimize those impacts. So I'll stop there, and thanks for your thoughts on that.
Great, thanks, Karen. And I'll say, as always, it's appreciated. And, you know, you always have thoughtful questions in there. I enjoy them, actually, because it does provide a lot to the conversation. You know, I'll start off, and then I'll probably ask Rick to join in. But, you know, our intent is, as we go through the areas, is that we're trying to deconflict them as best as possible. I mean, when we have a lease sale, we are hoping to have an area that is, that we're having a lease sale on. That is, although there's no way we're going to get down to zero conflict, we're hoping to have, you know, kind of the lowest hanging fruit. That's the best possible area for offshore wind, because you're right. There, you know, it's relative to the lease size, because, I mean, these are large areas, because it takes a relatively large area for, you know, offshore wind. You know, so I think that, you know, from a federal government perspective and from the, you know, just from the government perspective initially is, you know, that's what we're trying to do. You know, and I think, too, and I, this is where I asked Rick to join in, is, you know, we're not asking the leasee to determine what the impacts are. You know, we're really just wanting to know what they're proposing. And then, you know, it falls to us, you know, the federal government and our NEPA process to determine what the impacts are of that. So I don't think I would characterize it that we're looking for the leasee to characterize the impacts. And that's what, you know, our NEPA process is for as we move forward. But I'll turn it over to Rick and see if he has anything to add about that.
Well, about that, I don't know that I do, Doug. I think you said it, that we rely on a leasee to gather a lot of expensive data, so the taxpayer is not paying for it. But we're doing a lot of analysis of that to try to get to impacts. And, you know, I think, you know, I think that's apparent to most. I'm hearing part of the statement and comment and question from Karen, you know, sort of about some larger ideals about planning and siding. And I think those are, you know, really, I agree, Doug, those are really great and thought provoking questions. It's big and it's difficult. And kind of philosophical is the reason I'm stumbling. I'm not going to provide a very good answer. But, I mean, I think there are many different ideas about the best way to do planning and citing. And I think they are very closely related, these ideas, to concepts related to things that we hear questions and comments about from you all and from the public often about what, what are the, what are the lines? You know, where is, where is too much? When, when do you say this area is not okay? And how do you remove areas? And it's really difficult to answer that, not because there's no answer at all, but because it's dynamic, because as I've described before, and I know it's, it's hard to swallow, because it doesn't make it clear. But, you know, there's, it's a balance, and there's a lot of things that have to be balanced and considered and go into the decision about siding. And there's never going to be one answer about what's okay this, what's okay this time? What's not okay this time? You know, it's like, there's a lot of things to figure out. And, you know, it gets down to like, are you picking the single best spot? Or are you picking three good spots? Or, you know, what are you doing? It's just, it's a big concept. And I just mangled it all up. I'm sorry, I'm rambling. I just wanted to say I'm hearing you, and it's a great, great comment. Thank you, and more food for thought for us. Thanks.
And Carrie, if you don't mind, just to follow up a question, which is a little more simple and probably isn't needed for an answer today. But more specifically, in thinking about those expensive data collection activities that are expected from leases, how do we know that those data collection processes are rigorous and are telling us truthful data that leads to a really quality analysis by Boam? So the quality of your data, garbage in, garbage out? How do we, and how are Boam requirement structured so that those data are credible and rigorous and lead to good analysis outcomes? So happy to hear an answer on that, but, but it could be for a later time as well. Thanks.
No, that, that is, I will answer that. Thank you. You know, we have what I think is an extraordinarily rigorous process for review. So our website has guidelines about surveys that are required, and our regulations has a lot of detail about what's required in surveys. We have survey meetings with lesses, and we talk to them about the data that they're going to gather so that they understand clearly that we, when we get, when we accumulate that data in a plan that Boam is reviewing and doing an environmental impact statement on, that it's got to be sufficient to meet our analysis needs. I, I don't think it would be, I don't want to say possible. I think it would be very difficult for someone to hoodwink the Boam subject matter experts who are participating in those conversations, reviewing the plans and reviewing all the data that comes in and analyzing it into the EIS to be fooled by bad data, purposefully bad data. I mean, I think our process is, in government, in the government world, it's, I will say again, extraordinarily rigorous in that regard, in my opinion. I'm confident that it's getting us where we need to be. We do also, though, have Jen Miller on the line, who is the acting chief. And she, I'm looking to see if she's able to speak. I think so, as a panelist, and she can probably provide a lot more insight about review of plans.
Yeah, hi, everybody. My name is Jennifer Miller, and I am currently the acting chief for the Renewable Energy Section in the Pacific. But my previous day job was, is the senior geophysicist for the Renewable Energy Program Office. So I have actually personally looked at a number of data sets that we've received to support plans on the East Coast and was a critical part of the development of our survey guidelines. The survey guidelines that we have for renewable energy permitting are very rigorous. I can tell you from the geologic perspective, they require data or the guidelines recommend the collection of data at a pretty good resolution. I think we, we reference the IHO Special Order 1A International Hydrographic Office specifications. So if you, if you're familiar with hydrographic survey, that's pretty resolute information. It includes the collection of seabed imagery data, sonar data, backscatter data, ground truthing data. There's additional requirements for benthic habitat designations and even more rigorous collection for cultural resource and Section 106 data information needs. So there is, there is quite a bit of data out there, and it does go through quite a bit of formal review. We do have customized software on our computers in order to review the data from a QA QC perspective. So we do actually go in and open up the data files and review them independently. Thank you so much. If there's any additional questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you all. Good question. Good questions, good answers. Thank you. Keeping an eye on the time here. We have some people on deck, but I also promised a break. I think that we should, we can continue this question and answer maybe after a short break. But I do, I called out Yelena and Heather Mann. So I want to make sure that both of you can sit tight through a break and then get back to you. If you have to rush out for some reason, then we can go to you now. So just throw something in the chat if, or speak if you have to go now or if you could wait till after a break.
Carrie, this is Heather. I can wait till after the break.
Thanks, Heather.
Carrie, Yelena here. I think you guys can hear me now. I can wait till the break as well.
Okay, great. Well, let's do a 10-minute break, please. Try to, you know, keep some momentum here. I think we're doing fairly well. And here's what I would like to do. So everyone pay attention here, because we have public comment today also. So after the break, we'll come back and we'll try to finish up some more questions and answers, because I think it's really valuable and helpful. And this was, you know, an important point of this meeting. But if you are here to make public comment, then everyone who has their hands up now, that's fine. You can leave your hands up. If you're planning to make public comment today, please raise your hand during the break now, and we will keep track of all those hands that are raised. And that'll give us an idea of how many people plan to make public comment and how, you know, if we have to allot, you know, or limit time per comment, that kind of thing. So anyway, we're going to do a 10-minute break. If you would like to make public comment, please just raise your hand right now. We have a list of the people who have their hands raised right now already. So don't worry about that. But just put your hand up if you're going to make public comment. And let's come back in 10 minutes, which is 3:33. See you in 10 minutes. Okay, we got about one more minute. And a reminder for anyone who wishes to make public comment, please raise your hand. We have a list going, and I'm assuming some of the people who were already on deck for questions will want to make comment, too. That's fine. We'll sort that out. If for some reason you're not able to raise your hand, then put your name in the chat, please. We'll get going here in just about a minute or half a minute. Okay, I trust that everyone is back here, ready to go. So just to refresh, what we're going to do is to continue on with the agenda item. See questions and discussion for a little bit longer and see if we can get to the rest of the people who have questions. We did get a handful of people who want to do public comment, and that's fine. It's not a huge amount, so that, that's good. That means we can take at least a few more minutes to get to the questions and answer. I think this is a really helpful interaction here. So let's keep doing that. And then at some point, we'll have to move on to public comment. So I think where we left it was, Yelena should be able to speak now. So we're going to, we're going to go to Yelena and then Heather Mann and then Mike Okineski. So Yelena, are you with us?
Carrie, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Gary, for your patience with me as I was working through my IT challenges. It is my understanding, in developing the regulatory framework for offshore wind, Boam has been substantially relying on direct input from the energy sector, including offshore wind energy industry. For example, the recommendations made by five working groups that were established back in 2017, together with American Clean Power Association in collaboration with Boam and NREL, National Renewable Energy Lab. Those five working groups comprised of the energy players, the actual industry and others and the association. And the recommendations made by those groups will contribute towards establishment of the updated roadmap for developing offshore wind in the U.S. With that, if I am correct in my evaluation, my question is, is there any interest from Boam to partner with the fishing industry through establishment of the working groups similar to what American Clean Power Association was able to accomplish? But here with a goal to really minimize the impacts to the environment and the existing ocean users and truly create a collaborative approach to pursuing the offshore wind energy development of the West Coast.
Hey, thanks, Yelena. This is Doug. I'll take a first crack at it. And I think if I understand the question correctly, you know, what you're suggesting is exactly what Boam would like to do. I mean, I think that, you know, our intent is, you know, we, you know, the kind of this meeting is kind of a way we can engage directly with the fishing community and kind of figure out how we should be communicating and how we should be, you know, developing the partnership so that we can look at the areas and we can develop something that is, you know, something that, you know, because we're looking for your input. I mean, so I think what I'm hearing, and, you know, I'll ask the rest of the team to chime in, but I think that's exactly what we want to do. Because we, you know, we do take engagement seriously, and we want to have meaningful engagement. And it sounds like we're on the right path to do that. So I'll just say, let's make sure that, you know, we take this as the beginning and know that it's the beginning and move forward and start a communication. We can, you know, hopefully find some areas where we deconflict as best as possible. And I'll ask if the Boam, any of the rest of the Boam team has anything to add to that.
Well, to, at the risk of maybe going a little too far, so nobody, nobody quote me on this. I'm saying it in a public forum. No, but I'm, I sit on a team of Boam people who talk a lot about fishing engagement, and we are always exploring ideas for trying to, you know, evolve our processes to do as good as we can do, to do, to do better next time than we're doing today. And we talk often about potential opportunities that sound in the vicinity of what you're talking about, Yelena. And I don't have anything to say today about a specific meeting that's coming up. But I will say that that idea, that concept, I guess I should say, is not completely novel and something that we continue to think about to see what we could do to try to make progress there. So sorry, I can be more specific just because, you know, there is no answer today, but I want to assure you, thanks for the comment and assure you that we are trying to brainstorm ways to make opportunities like that available.
Okay, thank you very much for the question. Let's now go to Heather Mann.
Thanks, Carrie. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
So before I start my comment question, you know, I have a recommendation and that is that you just continue the question and answer period incorporating the public comments. I think many of us that aren't on the committee have questions within our public comments. So I'm not sure why it has to be so rigid that you can't just continue that. So my comment is probably a couple of minutes, but it includes several questions. So I'll just jump in and I'd like to get some answers to the questions. So my name is Heather Mann. I am the Director of the Midwater Trawlers Cooperative. MTC vessels primarily fish whiting, but we also fish significant amounts of groundfish like sablefish and rockfish. With the short time we've had with the call areas, my boats have already reported to me that they have taken millions and millions of pounds of whiting out of the current call areas. This information is widely available and it has been commonly known that this information's been available since back during the Principal Power debacle several years ago. These hundreds of millions of pounds of whiting support thousands of family wage jobs in several rural coastal communities. On the whiting slide, Frank said, "We see there's a lot of whiting fishing happening in the call areas," and quote, "we will consider it moving forward," end quote. So what does this even mean? What are the metrics for BOAM consideration? And why haven't those metrics been made public? What level of negative impact has to occur to humans or wildlife or both for BOAM to decide not to move forward with an area? You know, Rick responded somewhat to a question from Corin and respectfully, that answer was wholly unsatisfying. It's not a big concept to watch your livelihood disappear in a process that isn't transparent, one that we don't know what the metrics are. I've heard a lot of maybe this and we will see, or that's not my area. How is information that stakeholders are sharing with Frank or Whitney or anyone flowing up to the decision makers? Who are the decision makers? This came up multiple times last week. We know Doug signs the lease, but is he the one who decides it's okay to put my boats out of business? BOAM keeps saying they are committed to transparency and open dialogue and authentic engagement. But if that were true, then the call areas presented would be different. It's as if the information provided over the last one and a half years have been largely ignored, including the Bandon Hide Spot and is an example of that. Not only is it critically important to fishing, my understanding is it's not even suitable habitat for these installations. So why should we believe that you're committed to honest dialogue moving forward? Why are the inner workings at BOAM so secretive? And imagine my dismay at seeing an agenda item led by Doug at a conference later this month in California focused on streamlining the BOAM process, I guess to make it move even faster. So I'm hopeful that those of you in decision-making positions at the council and NIMs are now seeing how flawed the BOAM process is and that this is the complete opposite of the stakeholder-driven council process we participate in and we trust in. And I ask that when you take this up next week, you consider that and become as engaged as you can. This process that BOAM is undertaking has a great potential to threaten human lives. Yes, human lives, livelihoods, marine life and the marine ecosystem. BOAM may say they don't need an EIS or they're confident in their processes, but my fishing colleagues on the East Coast who are currently suing BOAM do not agree. And to BOAM, you guys promised us that this process would be different than the East Coast, but it's not. And my multi-generational fishing, all the fishing families who sustain the fabric of rural Oregon coastal communities, they deserve better from you and the federal government. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Heather. I think that was a comment more than a question.
You know, I'll just, because I had the same thing. That was my thought too, Carrie, but I did want to weigh in. You know, and I think Heather, like I tried to articulate in the task force meeting is, you know, there is no, you know, we don't have a metric to point to, you know, that is, there are a lot of considerations and a lot of areas that we have to take into consideration as we move forward and, you know, trying to determine where the lease area is. So, you know, I, we, and it's not a perfect process, but we do strive to make it transparent, even though it's not perfect. So I think, you know, it sounds like, you know, we could definitely do better. And I think that that's our intent and, you know, kind of the previous discussion is, you know, we want to meet with the fishing community and we want to get the input. And we, I think that we owe it to everyone to show at the end of the day how we use the information that we did get and what we did with it and how we use that in our decision making. So I think that, you know, we definitely tried to do that with the presentation that we had today. And, you know, in the next step in the process, when we get to area ID, you know, the onus is on us and we take it very seriously that when we have that area ID document to show how we got to the wind energy areas, we are striving to make sure we show how we used every piece of information that we've received on how we came up with those areas. You know, I can't guarantee that it's going to be perfect and I can't guarantee that, you know, it's going to be 100% satisfactory for everyone, but we should be able to show our work as to how we came up with those wind energy areas and it should be a transparent process. And that's what we are striving to do.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Heather.
Hey, Carrie, can I jump in real quick?
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, I just want to address what Heather asked about, you know, extending the discussion timeframe longer if we can. I think, you know, given the interactions that we're having and given the two-way conversations, I'm totally in support of that. If that matters.
You're the chair. You're the co-chair, so it half matters. But I agree. I mean, I think we're having a good discussion and, you know, this is important that the stakeholders are, you know, feeling heard and listened to and BOAM has an opportunity to respond. So, you know, I don't think it would be, you know, throwing the agenda out the window if we let this continue on. I do want to make sure that we get to the people that, you know, have their hands up either for a public comment or for the Q and A. We're doing okay for time. So Susan, you're also the co-chair and BOAM is our, you know, our co-host here. So I guess if, you know, if anyone sees a problem with continuing this, then now's the time to speak up. Otherwise, I'm okay with that.
Hey, Carrie, I'll just weigh in. The BOAM team is, will continue as long as we need on the question and answer in the dialogue.
Thank you, Doug. I appreciate that. Okay, well then, let's keep going. Here's what I'd like to do next. You know, we're keeping an eye on panelists who are mostly the Marine Planning Committee members and the other attendees, giving priority to panelists since this is an MPC meeting, but also trying to jump around when we can also. So I'd like to go to Mike Okineski and then Flaxton Conway after that. So Mike, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, thank you and thank you for the opportunity to comment and question, I guess. Mine's going to take a little different path here and I have heard over and over, and I've said it myself, I think at the beginning of this whole process and when I got involved, is why the EIS is done at the back end. And I tend to disagree with the idea that an EA and an EIS come up to the same level of being rigorous. And I'm going to, recently I read a magazine article in Marine Science. It's the emergence of large-scale hydrodynamic structures due to atmospheric offshore wind farm wakes. And what that article does, it's a research study that was done over in Europe in wind farms and to attempt to get a measurement of sorts on what the effects are on the downstream wind and the sea surface or below the sea surface as this wind passes through the turbines. And they came up with some pretty interesting conclusions, some of which they think would have, could have potential impacts on marine ecosystems. Well, why does that matter? Well, one reason I can think of for sure, having done sardines for a number of years and studied that a little bit and been introduced to the process, they swim offshore to spawn. They swim about 60 miles to maybe 100 miles offshore and they're a very skittish animal. They're not abundant right now, but anchovies are. Anchovies are a little bit harder to find out exactly where they spawn, but the young go in the shore and the larval young of sardines go in the shore, about 100 miles, 600 miles. Now, what kind of effect or impact is it going to have on this food conveyor for fish, whales and seabirds? If all of a sudden they find a wall of turbines out there that they can't get around or don't want to get around? And there's going to be potentially predators that inhabit those areas right under the turbines that could be another factor. So, I mean, before it was, well, yeah, we could have impacts on the environment and you couldn't really predict too much what that might be or which areas it might hit on. But there is information on these sardines and there's information on the anchovies. There's been a lot of studies on them. And the fact is that anchovies, I believe right now, I read somewhere and I apologize, I don't recall where, are the single biggest finfish of, you know, forage fish out there right now and are all over the California current and they play a major role in whale feed and also, you know, as I said, seabirds and other finfish such as salmon. So could these wind farms have an impact that's big enough to stop that conveyor belt of food that's coming into these other sources and our fisheries as well because we do fish on them at times? That's a question that I don't think can be answered without a programmatic EIS and some study. But there's a lot of papers out there and there's more coming out of Europe all the time. I haven't seen anything of substance as far as wind energy effects on the ocean hydrology, I guess. If in the US, I've heard there's been some studies out there, but I don't know, I've never read any of them or heard of what they are. But I guess I would ask BOAM to, what's your response to this? Does this matter? It's a lot bigger than just, you know, a few fishermen or a large number of fishermen actually going out of business. It could affect the whole ecology of the ocean. And I guess I'm just asking, is that a big enough thing to maybe stop and take a look at what's, what you're doing out there in this race to get these turbines up and hand out leases before we do a programmatic EIS? I tend to think differently. If your answer is yes, we just keep going. So, and I think a lot of other people out there are starting, in the environmental community are starting to question this as well. There were a number of comments in the humble EA from that community about the same things we're asking right here, right now, as far as an EIS being done at the front end before leasing. And with that all, thank you for allowing me to ask that question and I will let you see if you have an answer.
Thank you, Mike. This is Rick. I know that you did mention this in the task force meeting. I think you typed it in the chat because I copied your writing and sent it to my oceanographer and fisheries person and made sure they were aware of the questions that we need to research and investigate and understand this issue. So we are following up on that and thank you for submitting it. On the EIS question, I guess I would stress that I do hear what you're all asking about the EIS and to put the finest point I can on the response to try to know, just so you know what I'm, to make sure that I am confident that you all are understanding the answer, even though I know that you may not disagree with it, I just want to make sure you're understanding that the scope of our analysis at the leasing stage is on site characterization and site assessment. And that's why we do an environmental assessment. When you're asking questions about EISs, I know that you are also asking, why isn't the scope of the analysis larger to include other things and those things that come later in the process? I hear that. I know what you are asking and the answer has been, BOAM has not yet and does not plan to change that process. I understand what you're saying and we are aware of the concern. Right now, we do not plan to change the process to do an EIS to include project-related impacts that come later in our analysis at the earlier stage, but I hear you. I hear the question and the concern. I understand and I hope you understand my response about not doing any EISs because of the way we frame our process. So I, I guess I'll end there, but just hoping that we all, we all understand what we're saying and just again acknowledging that you won't, you won't like that answer, but I hope you understand what I'm saying is what I'm getting at. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. So in regards to the question about, you know, any disruptions to currents or upwelling, that kind of thing, I heard you say that you forwarded on that question and that article and we don't have a response yet. Is that right? Or did I miss something in your reply?
Sorry, there's a loud noise in my background. I wanted to let that pass. My answer specifically was, we got the question. I did ask my subject matter experts to understand, investigate and be prepared to discuss more. So it's, I guess I would say, in process. And since we have the question, expect to see it in our analyses that are forthcoming.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, let's go to Flaxton Conway and then to Delia Kelly. Oh, Flaxton, I might have to...
Great.
Oh, good. You're there. Go ahead.
I am here. Thank you for, and thanks very much for allowing me to ask a few questions or make a few comments. So I want to commend everybody who's been speaking up so eloquently today about their concerns and asking for specific questions and broader questions. I also really appreciate the comparison to the council process, though while not always pretty and it has definitely grown and changed over time so that people feel that they are a part of the process. And so I do appreciate, Doug, you've used several terms today that I think are really important. You talk about meaningful engagement and having an open dialogue. And, and the word engagement, not to get, you know, too academic here, but engagement is different than just involvement or public involvement or public opinion. And true stakeholder engagement really facilitates the willingness and ability of the stakeholders to take an active role in the decisions that affect them. And I think that's what you're hearing by comments like Heather's and even Corin's earlier. You know, stakeholders provide input and they actually feel listened to. And in the end, if you ask them, you know, should they feel confident or they should feel confident that their input is actually considered and they could be able to talk about the ways that it was used in decision-making? And both sides can talk about that. So you've mentioned that and I think that that's really good. I'm not sure that that's what's happening because what we're hearing over and over again, I think, today is, today is are people making comments and sharing things? And, and wondering where does, either where's the input been taken into consideration? Or can it be taken into consideration? So, you know, you, you asked, we want to figure out how we should be communicating and I, while there's no perfect recipe for stakeholder engagement, it's true that each effective process uses communication, broad based inclusion. You know, early and mutual learning. And so, even something is what might not seem, I know you seem to have a lot of reasons why you can't do this, but the, the three gigawatt, the amount of size that that would take even using, you know, miles instead of metric measures would really help people. And then if we're talking about a seven, where we have a call area that's 17 gigawatts big. And then you say, well, it's three gigawatts for the near term development. Well, what does near term mean? And, you know, or, you know, could be used later. How, how long is later? And if it could be bigger after that? So, and lastly, and I'll wrap up and apologies is here, you know, I mean, could three gigawatts be three one gigawatt areas which would take up a smaller footprint, which would help avoid some of the problems that we see like safety issues and, and that kind of thing? Or does it, is it, are we looking at at least that it's going to be for three gigawatts worth of space? If that was 300 square miles or so? Then as the technology advances, which you've mentioned and gets to be more efficient, you could actually generate more energy, but out of that, that original small footprint. And I think it's those kinds of things that would help people to understand that their concerns of it being too big to start with, getting bigger over time and not feeling heard. That would help. So, thank you.
Thank you. And for those who don't know, Flaxton, you're with Oregon State and Oregon Sea Grant, I do believe.
Yes.
I don't remember if you mentioned that. So, thank you for joining us today. Let's go to Delia Kelly next.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie. I actually put my hand down so that I could we could just spend as much time as possible with members of the fishing industry having their, having their say today. So, I'll, I'll hold, hold off. Thanks.
Okay, sounds fine. Thank you. Then in that case, let's go to Dale Beasley and then Kathy Lloyd after that. So, Dale, if you are unmuted, why don't you go ahead? If you're still muted, we'll try to get you unmuted. Okay, Dale, can you talk now?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Ah, yep, we can hear you now.
Oh, that's great. I just want to say that I definitely support what Heather Mann talked about. And I think that's the same interest you're going to hear from most of the fishing industry. And I'm a little disappointed personally in the process to date. And I really appreciated Flaxton's comments here about that people want to be heard and not only heard, but what they say is reflected in the end result. And one of the comments I've heard here numerous times today is that we're sorry, but this is our process and we're not going to deviate. And I think I've heard that three or four times so far. And to put it bluntly, I think a lot of the processes is broken. And I have to agree with a lot of the people today that say they want a little more information earlier. And the thing that we have to do at the end of the day is to avoid as much conflict as absolutely possible with the existing uses, which includes fishing. I don't think Bohm has an appreciation for how constricted fishing has become on our coast. And that we've had enough damages to our industry that they can't sustain a whole lot more and expect to be viable. And where I live, it's on the north end of the Oregon coast and my community has been recognized by NOAA data as the fourth most fish dependent community in the nation. I'm glad to see that you didn't put any weeds or whatever up in the north end of Oregon here. But I'm also concerned because a lot of our fishing fleet fishes up and down the coast and I'll be continuing to comment and I've been writing a, a letter to the director of Bohm, which I will put out here in a couple of weeks and I would like it to be spread wide and far because there's a lot of thought has gone into it. It's taken me a couple of months to write it here. It's about the process here and how to protect our fisheries moving forward in the future here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Let's, who did I say? Kathy Lloyd. Let's go to Kathy and see if you are unmuted. Can you talk, Kathy?
Yes, it's Kathy Lloyd, M O Y D.
Oh, Lloyd. Okay, hi Kathy.
That one, the common ones. Okay, my, mine is really a question is, you know, I actually asked it at the test course meeting, but then I wasn't able to go to the afternoon session. So, I don't know if you answered it there. So, I'm going to repeat it here. And it's what, given the fact that these this facility should be in existence for a large number of years. I'm wondering if you're taking into account the potential effects of climate change and ocean acidification on things like the commercial fisheries. I'm, I've been a pelagic burger and whale watcher. So, you know, I use the ocean and we've also noted that the things like even the wind and the currents can be affected by climate change. So, I'm just wondering if you're doing anything to see how your areas are going to change over time?
Thank you for the question, Ms. Lloyd. This is Rick again with Office of Environment and I will say in two ways, we are doing quite a lot of work on that front. So, in one way is through our environmental studies program. And among ongoing studies that we have, some are certainly touching on issues related to climate change and we have had ocean acidification studies. I'd have to look at our, our list to recall what, what years those were, but I mean, I guess the short answer is yes, for our environmental studies program, certainly. But also when we prepare an environmental impact statement related to a project, our chapter threes are always about the environmental setting. And part of the discussion in that chapter in all the ISs now really, not just for what we expect to see for construction operations plans, but this is something that's really emerged government wide, I would say for environmental settings is to spend quite a lot of time talking about the changing environment, really because of climate change, but you know, there can be other factors as well, but it's largely about climate change. And it's very important whenever you're taking on an action and trying to talk about, to describe potential impacts, to be able to talk about what the environment in the vicinity of the project and the, and the action area looks like now, but what you know it might look like as time moves on through the duration of the project. So, it's become a really important part of our environmental impact statement process to, to take that look. So, thank you.
Okay, what I'd like to do is send you an email and have you send me some of the stuff that you've already done, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. And do you know how to reach me already or do you want me to?
I think, I think your email was on some of the.
It is, yeah. Okay, great. Looking forward to that. Thank you.
You know, I'm going to jump in here. This is Carrie. If you want someone from Bohm, maybe you could just put up that, that final slide from your slideshow with the contact information. Just so we have it in the background since no one's presenting anything right now, that way people can take their time to jot down your contact info. One thing, while I'm thinking of it, I think I did mention that we will be posting a link to this recording. So, you can relive this whole afternoon at your leisure. And then also we are hoping to have a written summary. It's not really meeting, minutes of the meeting. But it's more of a characterization, sort of broad scale characterization of this meeting, some of the, you know, key questions, issues, comments, stuff like that. So, I just wanted to let people know that we are hoping to get that and would of course make that available as well. Okay, Susan, let's see. I think we're through that list. And so now we are through the original list of questioners. And we have, you know, maybe a dozen or so names for public comment. And so, I'm assuming that they will, you know, either have, I guess, I don't want to miss that someone who has just a comment to make and not a question. So, we're just going to keep going down the list and I see a few more hands raised. I'd also like to circle back to Heather Mann because I think that you had some questions that maybe didn't get fully addressed. So, why don't we, looking at the list, why don't we start with Nick Edwards? We're onto the public comment part. But you know, that also, you know, that doesn't mean that you, we're only doing public comment. If you have a question, the specific question for one of our Bohm guests, that's fine too. So, let's do Nick Edwards and then Mike Conroy. I see your hand up next. Oh, and Nick. Let's see if we can get you unmuted.
How about now?
There you go. Go ahead.
How about now? I hear, I hear you.
Yep, go for it. Can you hear us? You're on, Nick. We hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Let's see. I can't hear anybody.
Okay, we're going to we're going to chat Nick and I think he's probably got us muted. So, we're going to move on and come back to Nick. Mike Conroy, why don't you go next?
Yeah, okay, thanks. Let me pull it. I, I, it's not my comment. I'm going to read in a comment from Peter Florinai who texted to me. He wanted me to let everybody know it's Peter Florinai, he's attorney in San Diego and he's speaking on behalf of WFOA. The commercial fishermen are extremely upset with where you have designated call areas. They think your fisheries data is very faulty and want more information from NOAA and other scientists. If you really want to avoid conflicts, how can you with a straight face simply disregard a programmatic environmental income statement as a possibility because you have never done it for a project before? Or is that what you really mean to say? You want to avoid conflicts with current ocean users? Be sure you don't knowledge, hold on, be sure you don't acknowledge any, even though you have fishermen and NGOs putting them on the table in front of you, meeting after meeting. And I'm assuming he's referring to the idea of a programmatic EIS. And that's, that's from Peter and that was his comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Was pausing to see if anyone wanted to reply to that. Not hearing anyone. I'm going to see if Nick is back with us.
I hit unmute myself.
Oh, okay, Nick, can you hear us now?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm Nick Edwards. I'm the Secretary of Shrimp Producers Marketing Cooperative and we have 35 vessels that harvest pink shrimp in Dungeness, or pink shrimp in Oregon and Washington, California waters. One couldn't help but to notice after the Bohm staff meeting or that we had the last meeting that knowing was willing to comment on the use of a programmatic EIS prior to a WEA being proposed. Even after many completely different sectors, we're all asking Bohm to use this process moving forward. Late last Friday, Bohm showed that there was, they're not willing to show down, slow down the process because implementing a problem, a problematic programmatic EIS on the West Coast might slow the process down by as much as two years. The abandoned call area is, is a perfect example of what's going on with the Bohm, Bohm's current process. If a programmatic EIS was done on the abandoned call area and was fully vetted, they would have discovered that the abandoned high spot is an essential fish habitat conservation area. It has a minimum of 25, 25% rocky reef habitat, which has produced one of the most pristine ecosystems on the West Coast. And lastly, it was, has one of the steepest slopes of any of the collar areas and therefore it's not very desirable for offshore wind developers. I, I've trawled most of every square mile in my 40 year career of the abandoned call area. I've landed millions of pounds of rockfish and bottom fish from the abandoned high spot. The Oregon Trawl Commission with fishermen from Coos Bay worked with NGOs like Shem's Judd to make this, make it one of the most successful conservation areas on the West Coast. The industrialization of the abandoned call area with offshore wind will jeopardize the abandoned high spot essential fish habitat with conservation. With this conservation area. And I, I have a question, just one for Doug or Rick. With Bohm's current understanding, understanding now that the abandoned call area, which has potentially 20%, 20% of rocky reef habitat and currently an essential fish habitat conservation area. As a member of the Bohm team, would you recommend to your superiors now to remove the abandoned call area as a WEA? I mean, the South Coast is already slammed with three call areas. So, I'd, I'd love to hear back on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll respond to that. This is Rick Yard again, Office of Environment with Bohm. I think that the abandoned high spot is a really great example of how to sort of walk through how this process is working for us. And I do note that you started your comment talking about programmatic EIS again and the benefits that that could bring, but to use the abandoned high spot as an example. So, we have said in the presentations, but I think you'll see it too when the call is ultimately published, that we acknowledged that we got many comments about reef habitats and their importance in a lot of ways environmentally, intrafishing issues. And we avoided some of those that were called out specifically in comments that we got, Hackett and Stonewall for examples. But then we put it out there that we know that there are going to be more and we wanted to seek further information about people's knowledge of those and work with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to gain better understandings and consider what else might be out there. So, now we've heard many comments already about abandoned high spot. I think that you all can fully expect that when we move to further stages of the process, we are going to be acknowledging all those comments that we've heard and explaining ourselves about what we know and the information that we've gathered about the, in the high spot and ultimately what the decision is at the wind energy area identification stage about excluding it or not excluding it and explaining why. So, this is what we're here for, right? We're, we're, we're telling you, we're seeking information and this is exactly the kind of thing we're seeking. And so, we hear you about Ben and I spot and we are now on call to continue to gather information and work with the public and agencies and others to make sure that we fully understand that particular spot and the others that we'll hear about and explain ourselves when we signal what our next milestone is going to be. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Next we have Rex. I don't have your last name, but maybe you can tell us that. And Rex, you you should be able to speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Very good. Yes, Rex Leach, for the record, co-chair of the Oregon Trawl Commission. I'm also the Oregon Trawl Foundation President and I sit on the board of the Oregon I'm also the Oregon Trawl Foundation President, and I sit on the board of the Oregon Fisherman and Scavenger Committee. Thank you, Carrie, for letting me speak today, and thank you, Heather Mann. Heather Mann well said. I have three groundfish vessels, which currently fish out of Kus Bay. And I'm speaking today on behalf of the 13 families that my boat supports. I have, I fish these grounds that are called Brookings, Bannon, and Kus Bay Call areas for 40 years. My two sons, and a gentleman that has worked for me for 30 years, are now fishing these same grounds. These call areas take up to 90% of the area we have fish to provide for our families and the processors which we deliver to, and the several families that the processors provide jobs for, and the seafood that most of us eat here on the West Coast. I may not own the land out there, but I do own my share of the fish that live on those lands. I believe I have the right to harvest my fish that live on these lands. I hope that everyone on this call today, the MPC, PFMC, and Boam can help all of us here on the South Coast of fishies water for decades. Keep access to the ground and ground fish that belong to each and everyone with a groundfish permit and quota share. I beg you to please keep these wind farm areas as small as possible, so we as fishermen can survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Rex. Appreciate the comment. Next, let's go to Lori Steele and then Travis Hunter.
Thank you. I'm assuming you can hear me.
We sure can.
Okay, thanks. I'm Lori Steele, and I'm the Executive Director of the West Coast Seafood Processors Association. We represent six major seafood processing companies in all three West Coast states and several smaller processors and support businesses. Our members participate in every fishery managed by the council, as well as Dungeness crab and Pacific pink shrimp. We represent a substantial portion of the West Coast and fishing and seafood infrastructure. We are essential workers, and we have provided thousands of year-round jobs in coastal communities for many, many decades. We are the historical users, and we have been the stewards of these wind energy call areas for well over 100 years. The potential impacts of offshore wind development on the Pacific coast is an issue of national importance. Bohem must understand the fact that commercial fishing and the seafood processing industry on the West Coast contributes significantly to overall US seafood production. Commercial fishermen on the West Coast deliver more than $500 million in ex vessel per value per annum, accounting for 13% of the value and 12% of the volume of total US seafood production. One quarter of all American seafood processing and wholesale jobs are located in Washington, Oregon, and California, presenting the largest employment opportunity among all seafood-producing regions in the United States. The domestic seafood sector is a critically important component of Americans' food production and security, supporting more than 1.2 million jobs, generating more than $140 billion in sales impacts, and contributing more than $60 billion to our country's gross domestic product. Commercial seafood production plays a very important role in our rural communities here along the West Coast, where it is often the single largest contributor to net earnings. I'm very disappointed to see the call areas cover some of Oregon's most important fishing grounds and are most critical to our rural communities in Southern Oregon. I don't understand how these areas could have been selected if Bohem has, in fact, been engaging with the fishing industry during this process. I certainly hope that Bohem honors their commitment that we have heard here today to pare down these call areas to much smaller areas and minimize impacts on our fisheries and ocean ecosystems. And I hope that NOAA and NIPS, the states and the council, hold them to it. I echo the very significant concerns expressed by the NEPA process as it relates to considering ecosystem impacts and cumulative impacts prior to citing wind energy areas. All I'll say about that is that I think it would be completely irresponsible for the government to allow bone to move forward without considering those impacts on our fisheries and ecosystems now. I have significant concerns about shifts in our research survey impacts on our research survey and shifts in fishing effort that could result from displacement. Displacement of our fleet would likely affect groundfish and whiting trowel quota allocations and their values as well. Furthermore, shifting effort will affect shoreside processors whose facilities are not mobile. We cannot move anywhere else. Absolutely no consideration has been given to the potential impacts on shoreside products, processors, and our seafood infrastructure. In addition to the loss of jobs that have existed in our communities for over 100 years, offshore wind has significant potential to reduce the ability of the West Coast to contribute to the nation's food security during a time when it is increasingly important for us to secure as much high-quality, sustainable food sources as possible, especially proteins like wild-caught fish and seafood. Our communities are already playing a very important role in addressing the climate crisis in a world with an ever-increasing population and a need for more protein. Seafood can be caught and produced in high volume with a lower carbon footprint than any other protein source. Where are we going to get our food from? Moving forward as quickly as possible to develop these call areas runs directly counter to addressing some of our countries' most important needs and could put our West Coast communities at an even greater economic disadvantage. So in closing, there are far more unknowns than knowns in this process, and so far we are not getting sufficient answers to our questions. Bone needs to slow this down and listen to our ocean stakeholders. We want a real seat at the table. We want meaningful engagement. We want understanding of and respect for our 100-year history, our relationship with the ocean, our role in contributing to food security and addressing the climate crisis, and our contributions to the communities in which we live and work. So I will close with that, and I did have some questions, but Heather had sort of already had asked most of the questions that I had. So I'm thankful that you're going to go back to her so that she can get some answers to those questions. So thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thanks, Lori. Okay, let's move to Travis Hunter next, and then Greg Shaughnessy.
Thanks, Carrie. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, thank you. My name is Travis Hunter. I am the President of the Fishermen's Marketing Association, which represents trowel interests along the West Coast. I'm also the bottom trowel rep on the groundfish advisory sub-panel. And I'm also the owner-operator of two trawlers, one operating out of Eureka and one operating out of Brookings. I'd like to echo my sentiments of the commenters before me, such as Michael and Heather. I don't have a whole lot more to add, but my frustration with the leasing process framework just seems to be completely backwards from what it should be. You know, that, that leases would go out prior to a programmatic EIS seems to be absolutely backwards to me. I think that if I was a wind developer, I would want to have a little more certainty that if I was going to bid on a lease, that I would be able to, that I'd have some more certainty that the call areas or wind energy areas were sustainable. It was mentioned earlier that the Oregon wind energy areas would likely be, could be or would be windowed down from their, from their, the current call size of the call areas that they have. But this, this was not the case on the Humboldt call area, which became the Humboldt Wind Energy Area. And, you know, I'm wondering why we should have any confidence that it would be different for the Oregon call areas. But the last comment that I have is that most of the focus of the discussions today have been on the call areas and potential wind energy areas themselves, and potential negative impacts that it could have to to the fishing industry. But there hasn't been a whole lot of discussion about the transmission lines coming shoreward from these wind energy areas. And that opens up a whole another can of worms. And you know, it almost sounds like that that will be dealt with later, after the developers submit their plans or whatever. And it seems to me that at that, at that point, that that it's almost too late for engagement from the, from the fishing industry. So I thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Travis. Next, we're working down the list. We have, I think we're down to five or six people. We're at 4:30. So I think time-wise, we're doing okay. We do want to save a few minutes at the end to have some wrap up and talk about a couple of, you know, dates and next steps that are coming up. But I think we're doing okay, as long as we're, as long as we keep going. So Greg Shaughnessy, Shaughnessy, sorry, you're up next, and then Carrie Brandberg.
Hey, Carrie, thank you for hosting this today. Appreciate it. My name is Greg Shaughnessy. I'm with Ocean Gold Seafoods, and I'm very concerned about the mooring systems for these large structures. During the winter time out here, it's quite common for us to have either navigational or weather buoys ripped from their moorings, moved. And I don't know if the forces in play out here have been totally engineered to a potential wind structure of this magnitude. I mean, I've been out there, and I can't imagine something so large being able to secure it and anchored in a, in a spot, particularly with the side forces of the transmission cables strung between them. So that's a real concern of mine. And then I would just ask if you would consider a proof-of-concept area, maybe a handful of these large structures with the transmission lines strung between them over the course of a couple of winters, because it's not the average wind speeds that we get out here or the average swell height sea state that we get out here. It's the ass kickers that I'm worried about, when you've got a 40-foot westerly swell, and it's blowing 80 to 100 miles an hour. You've got 25-foot of wind junk on, on top of that swell. That happens out here quite often, and I'm concerned that the structures and the either tri or quad moorage systems is going to be up to the forces of a 6,000-mile fetch. Carrie, thanks a lot again for hosting this. I think a lot of people are able to get their thoughts out there to Boam, and, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate you being here today. Amy Sharp, you are up next, and you should be unmuted. Oh, wait, no, I said, I think I said Carrie Brandberg was next, and then we'll go to Amy Sharp.
Hi, I'm, I'm here. I just want to thank you for letting us have a chance to speak today for what it's worth. My name's Carrie Brandberg. I am a buyer and broker out of Newport in the central coast of Oregon. I represent more than 35 independently-owned and operated crab vessels that fish out of the central coast of Oregon, not to mention my own family-owned vessels and a retail and wholesale business for seafood. I'm also an Oregon Albacore Commissioner for the State of Oregon. And my question is, why did Bohem choose the date range that they did for the data and valuations that they showed for fisheries, instead of a more recent dates or and or longer date range that would reflect the current monetary valuations of catch species that they are today, rather than what they were in 2018? As we know, we are coming into record years for valuations, and you'd be looking at many millions more valuation than what you guys have the valuations at, if you were to, after 2014 date range. Also, it could show a broader range of migration patterns and stock variations than what you've shown for the species in those call areas. That's my question.
Okay, thanks. Hey, this is Frank. To answer that, yeah, and the, on the values, that is, it's not there to say this is absolutely what it's worth or anything. We'll, we'll be looking at values as we go forward. The purpose of that table was just so that we could show the maps of the highest value fisheries. So that's the only purpose of that table there.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Carrie, I hope that answered your question. Let's move down the list. Next up would be Amy Sharp. We have four people, four people left. We have Amy Sharp, Mike Rutherford, Heather Mann, and Brian. So let's go to Amy Sharp and then Mike. And is Amy unmuted? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can.
My name's Amy Sharp. I got my college education in natural resources and then spent seven years as an electrician before becoming a fisherman. And so during all my travels, I have been experienced with working with groups in order to create, you know, ecologically friendly timber harvests in order to satisfy a vast number of interest groups that came to the table together to work on various issues concerning timber harvests and, and things of that nature. And then also, as an electrician, I became familiar with electrical transmission and that sort of thing. And now as a fisherman, my livelihood is directly affected by what's going out or going on in our oceans. And I just would really, really like to ask that on the panel and in the committee, that the fishermen have a spot at the table, so that that way, we're sitting at the table instead of being on the menu on this. I feel like once this lease is basically sold to the highest bidder, my concern is what happens if things don't go as planned? What happens then? You know, and so I'd really like to ask that you guys really give the fishermen a spot at this table.
Thank you. Yep, yep, thank you. I've seen if anyone from Boam wants to respond. I can't say that I know that we are glad that you are here and that big, the, the main purpose of this meeting was to help facilitate that dialogue. So, you know, there's never enough, you know, to outreach and engagement, but we are glad that you're here, and I think Boam is too. I'll see if they want to reply.
Yeah, thanks for that, Carrie. And this is Doug, and I didn't know if that was a question directed towards Boam, or if it was directed towards the ad hoc committee, or sorry, I didn't know if we were, but I can say, you know, I'll echo that what Carrie said is that, you know, we are appreciative of everyone's participation. And, you know, I'll try to say it again, you know, we are committed to engagement. I mean, that's something that I'll just say that we think it's very important. And we do want to, you know, make sure that we're engaging and we're bringing the fishing community in to have a seat at the table so that we can have some, you know, earnest discussions and, you know, hopefully find some areas where we can minimize conflict as best as possible moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to Mike Rutherford and then Heather Mann.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Yeah. Oh, good afternoon. My name is Mike Rutherford. I am a commissioner on the Oregon Trawl Commission. I'm also a commercial fisherman. I'm also a commercial fisherman and boat owner here in Newport. I'm a multi generational fisherman. I come from a fishing family. My brothers, my sister, everybody in my family's participated in our business. My son now is graduated from high school and has started working on the vessels. I have nieces and nephews that will probably do the same thing when they come of age. I've been fishing these waters with my dad since I was a kid. My brothers would have the same story. A lot like Rex had brought up. We, we do, we own fish that we harvest every year because of the IQ program. We are stewards of the ocean. We have been for many, many years taking care of the ocean, working with with the managers and the lawmakers in our fisheries to be accountable for what we're doing on the ocean and keeping it. So we have future generations who can continue to thrive and live off this ocean. But it's troubling to hear that people who don't know what the ocean does for us and don't understand what it's like to be out there or make a living or make a life out of this ocean are, are gonna change our lives forever by implementing something that in, in my mind as a fisherman doesn't make any sense. There's no common sense behind it. Like Greg said, we, we don't know what the weather is gonna do to these wind turbines or how they're even going to be able to be how they're even going to be able to be operated or maintained. And what impacts is that gonna have? Who's gonna maintain them? Are we going to be dealing with foreign fleets coming into our waters to maintain foreign offshore wind? Or the, or, or is this going to be all within US control or whatever? Are these going to be US companies? We don't, we don't have those answers because we're selling the rights to our grounds. We're selling these rights to whoever has the money. And so as a fisherman, as somebody who's spent his life along with his father, his brothers, his sister, his children, where do we stand in all of this? I know that there's dialect coming up now. Oh, we want to hear what you guys have to say, but why didn't this dialect start a year and a half ago, two years ago? Why is it now? Is it because we're past a point where we're, we're fighting a losing battle now? These, these are the questions that, and the, the fears that run through my mind as I think about wind energy. How is wind energy going to benefit Oregon? How's it going to make up for the revenue that the, the, the commercial fishing industry brings into this state? And not only this state, we are a fishery within the West Coast. So there's fish coming out of Oregon, go into the state of Washington or into California. And so we're talking about more than one state. If we're talking about the economy, we're talking about more than one state because we're operating under a West Coast fishery in, in many instances. I travel up and down the West Coast harvesting seafood. My boats harvest seafood almost every day of the year. We're on the water. We know what the ocean's like. We know what the conditions are doing. We know what the, the fish stocks are like because we live it, we breathe it. We are there on the water every day. And I'd like to see one of you who are, are writing the rules to all this or who are, who are implementing these, these actions as to bring on this wind energy who could say the same thing. Anybody from Boam, has anybody ever spent the night out on the ocean harvesting Dungeness crab the worst time of year with 60 or 70 knot winds and 30 foot swells? I would say no. So how could these windmills sustain that? And I just also want to add that I'm really appreciative and thankful for the other members who have come together on this call and made comments in, in favor of our, our fishing fleet. I just admire you, Heather Mann, Lori Steele, Rex and, and Travis and, and just everybody who, Nick, for, for choosing to stand against this Goliath and fight for our future and our livelihood. And I just, thank you for taking the time to hear me. I'm probably starting to ramble on now, but I'm very passionate about this. I disagree with it 100%. And I just think there's a lot more things that need to be looked at before we start selling our land and giving it away. I feel like fishermen are the endangered species here, and maybe that's what we should be looking at when it comes to the environmental impacts is, is fishermen as an endangered species rather than just a user group. Also tied in with the fishing community is the tourism industry that comes in and out of these coastal coastal towns up and down this coast, all the way from, from Washington to California. People come to the coast to see the beach, to see the fishing vessels, to see the, the families that, that do this, to eat the seafood, to get a taste of what it's like to do what we do. And I just don't see how we can give that away or sell that. I don't think you could put a price on that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike, for the comments. Okay, there's been a few more hands up and names added to the comment list. We'll go to Heather Mann next. We then have six more people. I'm keeping an eye on the clock here. You know, I think let's try to plow through and, you know, and see if we can get to everyone. That's an important part, a point of this meeting. So if it's okay with the chairs and the other principals here, let's just keep going and see if we can get through all the names. So Heather, why don't you go ahead? You should be unmuted now.
Thanks, Kerry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. I appreciate it. So during my comment, I had at least, I think, eight questions. And I'd like to at least reiterate some of those and get answers to them. So some of them include, you know, what are the metrics that Boam is using to guide their decision making process? Why haven't those metrics been made public? How is the information that fishery stakeholders are sharing with Frank and Whitney making it to actual decision makers? Who are the decision makers? And then I would just add a couple of additional things based on what I've just heard. And, you know, Frank's answer to Kerry about the slides when she asked the question about why you chose those years. It sounded like he said it was to show the most valuable fisheries, but the revenue maybe is accurate or not, but it doesn't matter at this point. I have questions around that. And then lastly, Doug, respectfully, you said that you're committed to engagement. But just saying that is just, it's not enough. How are you committed to that engagement? Because what I'm hearing is that you will tell us how you came to a decision after the fact. And as fishermen and as taxpayers and as people who this will directly impact, you know, we deserve better and we need to understand how, how are you going to ensure authentic engagement? Thanks, Kerry, for the second chance.
Thank you, Heather. Sure. Yeah. So there's, I tried to jot down those questions and look to Boam staff. So you know, if you guys want me to repeat any of those, that's fine. Otherwise, why don't you go ahead? The first one or was about metrics and then why aren't they public?
Yeah, thanks, Kerry. I was going to start with a couple of them. I think a few of us will need to contribute to these. Frank and Doug were called out as well. We, we've talked about the metrics question a little bit today and I'm going to talk about it in the same way that I did with the PIS earlier, which is to say, I know that in the end, we're not going to agree on this point, but I do hope that we all, all understand what we're each talking about on metrics. There is no bright line and that is how it is. And I, I understand. I'm hearing the frustration about that because you want more certainty and outcomes. But I will repeat again that there are many factors and fishers and this fishing community is a hugely important one, which I hope you understand is why we spend so much time talking to you all and, and you all talking to us. I know you're spending a lot of time on this. Fishing is a huge factor, but there are many factors that the decision makers have to consider. And they've asked who the decision makers are and you've heard Doug is a decision maker for leases and our director is involved in every decision about this process. Those are the decision makers and they need to try to balance a lot. So you, you've heard about a lot of them. I know you're aware, but fishing is one of the very important factors that need to, needs to be investigated and, and considered. So are environmental issues and so are military uses and so is maritime navigation. There, there's a lot, a lot of things that need to be balanced and there is no algorithm where X equals point five, you know, there's just not a bright line. I'm sorry to, to say, but understanding again, I know you're not going to like that, but I hope you do understand that that is the answer to that question. I think there was one more I was gonna try to get to later in the list, but we can look back to that. I, I think probably Frank on the data question might want to add some context and then Doug had some things he probably wanted to say.
Yeah, I was just waiting to see. Oh, go ahead, Frank.
Okay, yeah, it, it, it won't be much more, but what I really need to do and act, you know, to be straightforward. Karen asked me to take those off and I just, I didn't get a chance. I had to travel across the country and stuff just lately. But, um, yeah, we can get those numbers off there, but the whole purpose of them, it wasn't to show what's the value specifically here and, and to use it for an analysis of value. It was to, to get us, okay, this one's landing a lot. This one is the second most, third most. Let's show these data sets. Let's start the discussion with the, the highest dollar data sets based on those years. Going forward, yeah, we'll definitely be getting newer data and bringing that in. But for this purpose, it was to just get us to which data sets to look at. And that's it for me, Doug.
Great. Thanks, Frank. And I'll jump in and, you know, and this is kind of to address your last point that you brought up, Heather, was you know, and that's kind of the, you know, the intent of this meeting is, you know, we realize that we're saying we want to, you know, engage meaningfully. And, you know, I think our question is, or one of our questions, you know, back to the fishing community is, you know, what does that look like? What is meaningful engagement look like to the fishing community? Because I, I think, you know, Boam has an idea and, and right now our idea is, you know, maybe we have some smaller in-person meetings where we can sit around the table and you know, look at the data and, and look at some maps and see what, you know, we can talk about and where that comes from. So at, at least that's what our perception is, but you know, we're looking for input from the fishing sector so that, you know, we are doing something that, you know, what is meaningful and what does that mean to, you know, the people on this call today? Because that's really what we're trying to get after. You know, that's one of the intents of this, you know, meeting that we're having is, you know, we know that we don't have the answer and we're looking for help on this one. And you know, we do want to meaningfully engage and that is something that we take very seriously. So I, I think I'm, I'm just asking for help on this one. And, you know, what can we, what can we do and what can we do better?
For starters, you could take the report that you paid Oregon State University to do for you a few years ago on engagement, but instead you've ignored it. Sorry, Kerry, I'll be quiet now, but this is crazy. This is crazy, crazy.
I'm hearing the frustration, Heather. So we understand you're concerned about this process. I don't want to respond in a way that sounds defensive at all. I'm just trying to, to kind of explain our perspectives and others in Boam can jump into, but you know, we as a point of contrast in federal permitting processes, you know, the, the process often starts when there's a project proposed. When this conversation start. And, and we have said we're years away from that. We have put out what we expect to be published as a call for information. We know that there are issues and concerns that are going to arise and we know that there's more work to do. And I, I think that we probably could have communicated the sort of stage we are at a little differently to help people understand that we, we knew we didn't de-conflict these areas when they came out. We put them out as areas that we knew there was wind potential and technical feasibility. And we acknowledge some issues. So as you, as you noted, Frank said, we know there's fishing in those areas and we are out here asking for information. And I think you all understand that those areas that have some more than 17 gigawatts of potential are probably pretty certain to get smaller. And that's going to be because we're talking to you all and to others about the issues that you're identifying, the concerns. And what, what we find to be going on is for other uses in those areas as we continue through the winnowing process to get to wind under areas.
Thank you, Rick, and others who replied. Heather, I, I think that your, the six questions that I caught were generally touched on, you know, maybe not to your satisfaction. Were, were there any others that you know, are respondable at this point?
Kerry, the, the responses are, are, are completely, they're just wholly unsatisfying. And I hope that other people recognize that. I, I'd, I'd rather just defer on the other questions. I, I don't want lip service, which is what we're getting and so I'll be quiet and let the other people talk. Thank you for giving me a second chance. I appreciate it and a lot to think about here. Really disappointing.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. All right. So when we have we have five names for public comment and a couple of marine planning committee members to wrap up, we're at four minutes till five. So here's what I would like to do. For, I, I see Brian, Yelena, Brad, Dick Og and Dan Fraser. We will get to you all. I would appreciate it if you keep your comments, you know, limited in time, please be succinct. And if, and, and if your comment has already been addressed or stated by someone else, then just tell us that you support that, you know, that would be the most effective way. So let's see if we can do a lightning round and try to get everyone their chance here. So Brian, I don't know if you're, wait. Okay, Brian, you should be able to talk now. Wait, no, try again.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Okay, yeah, you're on. Go.
Yeah, this is Brian Blake with Ocean Companies out of Westport, Washington. Thank you for holding this forum. As you can hear, the, the passion and the comments, this is serious business and I understand why folks are, are talking about this, the need for carbon free energy, but we don't get a chance to redo this. If this gets messed up, this will have Exxon Valdez like impacts on fishers, fishing families, fishing communities, and it's just unacceptable. And we've got to get the, the cart in the right place in this process and, and do the EIS now rather than later. So you have good information to actually, to go from. So that's a short and sweet. Thank you for the process, the ability to be heard. But I am very concerned about what But I, I am very concerned about what I've heard here today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. We appreciate it. That was good and succinct. Yelena, you're up next.
Let's see if I was able to unmute myself.
You did it. Well done.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. I would like to echo on Heather's point, the very last point, and also in response to Rick's statement, uh, response to Heather's point. About Boem not performing environmental reviews ahead of time, if you will. Um, well. That's not necessarily correct though. I don't think the question whether or not Boom performs, but rather what led to where we are. And I'm going to read you guys a little bit from the final case for alternative energy development and production and alternative use. The document from October two thousand seven. If you were to search it, please do not search it by Boom, search it by MMS Minerals Management Service, Service that later became Boom. Okay. In response to new authority under the Energy Policy Act of two thousand five, the MMS of the Department of Interior. Was establishing an alternative energy and alternative use program on the auto continental shelf to approve and manage. These potential activities. These programmatic environmental impact statement examines the potential environmental consequences. Of implementing the program and will be used to establish initial measures to mitigate environmental consequences. Given the rapidly evolving nature of this nascent industry. The MMS cannot reasonably anticipate and assess the potential, potential environmental impacts of all of the various technologies and potential. Locations where those technologies may be used or proposed. For the technologies being assessed within the time horizon for this EIS, and I'm referring to the document. Development is expected to occur near the shore where maximum water depth would be 100 meters. Or less for wind specifically, and I believe for wave, it's up to 500 meters, which does not apply here. The technique and the other point I want to bring up here, I have not had a chance to go through all the hundreds of pages yet, but I'm, I will, trust me. European pilot and commercial offshore wind projects have provided information to demonstrate the feasibility of offshore wind power generation. This experience combined with the fact that a large portion of the costs of development are for offshore activities that require expensive installation equipment. Means that in the U S, developers would likely skip the pilot and demonstration phase and move more directly to commercial operations. It is possible that new types of foundations for wind turbine generator. Located farther offshore or in deeper waters would need to be demonstrated. And I'm not going to be continuing reading because there's a lot of interesting information there. So this goes back to two thousand seven and, and beyond that year, starting way earlier before the deep water horizon disaster and the. Public relations crisis happened. That caused MMS to be dismembered into three separate agencies. And while fin- finances or economic contributions. Into the economy as well as the safety got a lot of attention. Environmental protections, however, didn't get as much attention, unfortunately. So here we are. Boom is relying on, from what I understand, correct me please if I'm wrong. Boom is using the same internal practices and. Regulatory framework that contributed partially with many other, of course, variables that played into it. The deep water horizon explosion and then. The ecological disaster that we're still experiencing in the Gulf of Mexico. So what I'm getting at. The other element here that was mentioned that there was a timeframe indicated for which this was applicable. And it was framed under that the developers would be interested in the near-term timeframe of four to seven years, something like that. We. We passed that. There is a completely new technology and we are still saying this is a nascent industry 15 years from. That pace production. And I agree it's nascent, however. There is more environmental studies. There is way more information out there now. From Europe and from the US talking about the environmental and socioeconomic impacts. So my question is how all those studies that are, I anticipate will continue to be produced increasingly. Be incorporated and I echo to Heather's great points. Thank you, Heather. How are the decisions are made? That's not clear at all. And as a matter of fact, in one of the council documents, I saw. That there is no scorecard or there is really no metrics. It's really up to the secretary. Well, that's not good enough. And I wanna, I don't want to take too much time. I, I am already, I realize that and I apologize, Carrie. But I would like to wrap this up by pointing out that as much as climate change and climate impacts. Is part of our everyday conversation in the turn on TV and it's there. Where is the consideration by Boom? The fishing industry and our fishing grounds, the value of those. To our local communities, our state, regions and the entire US and people who live here. Where is the consideration of food security in this? And what is the role of the commercial fishing industry in, in securing the resilient food systems? We know there's plenty of research talking about the impacts of climate change to egg production and food production. The predictions by Oregon State University here recently about the forty percent increased li- likelihood of devastating. Forest fires moving forward in our region. The Christmas trees were pretty much not affordable. The blueberries boiled. And whether or not individuals believe in climate change and what have you is going on. In the south, my office is in Brookings. For three, last three years, we've been living in a red sky dome. So. There, I see a little bit of disconnect here that food. We, our industry as food producers is not part of the consideration whatsoever. We're only looking at X vessel value. Thank you for that. That's not enough. Process, include processors. That wouldn't be enough. And local.
Hey Elena.
Yes, sorry.
I do want to wrap it up here.
I'm done. I'll stop. I apologize. I, I have a tendency to go over my limits recently.
No, no, thank you. You bring up a lot of big picture issues that, uh, you know, we all should be considering. So thank you for that. And I guess I'll pause and I'll see if there was any response.
Excuse me, this is Rick. Just really quickly, there was a lot in there and we, we, I don't know that I can get to it all right now, but I'll say. If I'm not mistaken, Yelena was reading from the programmatic environmental impact statement that Boom prepared to. Support the rulemaking that established the rules that guide how the program is implemented. And the. I completely agree. A lot of things have changed since two thousand and seven. This is an emerging industry with a lot of information and. Every time we prepare an EIS, we do effectively sort of update the status of that information. And I guess since she brought up decision-making, I, I should point out, speaking of those EISs. Every time an EIS is prepared and they're all on the website, uh, they do describe the decision-making process. So I think that people that want to dig into that could look at those. Just an example of any recent EIS from Boom to, uh, on the renewable energy front to sort of. See Boom's explanation of how decisions are made. Every EIS has a description of that. So. Thank you. I, I think that'll, that'll have to do for now.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Thank you, Elena. Uh, let's go to Brett and Brett, if you could make your comment or ask your question succinctly, let's go for it. If you're still on.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
I'm gonna go ahead. So I think you better hit that EIS a little bit harder. I'm a multi-generation fisherman. And you're gonna kick my ass, put me out of business and I'm gonna be angry. That's all I gotta say.
Brett, can you remind me your, oh, is this Brett Hearn?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Brett. Appreciate it. Okay, have a good weekend. Uh, Dick Og, you're next. Who are you?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, this is rapid fire.
All right. Thank you very much. First off, I just like to say thank you for the opportunity to say anything because, uh, I'm a, uh, I'm just a simple fisherman here in California and, and I'm watching this occur. And it's very, very difficult to, you know, the stomach. I mean, I've been in the electrical business for the. Roughly forty-five years in transmission and distribution. Um, and I have a very difficult time in understanding how all this is being put together without any real. Uh, understanding or foundation behind it. I'd like to know how we're going from point A to point B. I'd like to know. Travis brought up an excellent point, something that I was going to bring up was you have a call area. But you have no way to get from point, from the, from that call area in. And the effect that it will have on the inshore fisheries is significant. All of those things are, need to be considered. And I'm sure you're thinking about it, but I'd like to see engagement from the fishermen. And have the, and have us have the opportunity to be part of the process. Whether it be from port to port, whether it be individuals, I really feel it's extremely important to keep us involved. And help us be part of that decisional process. In addition to that, um, I just wanted to bring up long-term studies on wind. I've lived in this area for sixty-one years. And I've seen a decrease in, in wind over that time and in our shorelines. Has there been consideration as to these call areas and what will happen in the long term? I mean, you could install these things and 10 years later, you won't have an opportunity to produce anything. I mean, um, the, the loads that are needed inshore and produced offshore. There's going to be an increase in loads on the inshore and at ti- in time, will these actually be productive at all? I mean, I just wonder if this is really logistically logical. I don't see that. I just don't see it. I. I just, you know, personally from the, uh, electrical standpoint, I don't understand it. So I mean. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I appreciate the, uh, you know, everything that's going on and, and again, thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Appreciate the comment. Um, I don't. I don't think you had a specific question, but if there was, I want to, I don't want to skip over. I learned that lesson.
Not really, no. I thank you.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Um, Dan Fraser. You, um, for our public comments, you get to back clean up, Dan. Go for it.
Well, okay. Dan Fraser from Brookings, Oregon, commercial fisherman. Um, this is the second generation for me doing it. My dad started in nineteen seventy. Salmon fishing here on the Oregon coast, fishing northern, or northern California and, and parts of Oregon. Most of our comments today have been related to groundfish. Very little, if, in fact, I think I'm the only one other than, um, maybe one other person that I'm aware of that has spoke. In behalf of salmon fisheries. Most of the vessels that fish for salmon. Will not have AIS or BMS. So your data is skewed to start with in regards to where those fish, those fish are caught. The abandoned high spot has been referenced for groundfish. That is a spot that typically if the PFMC allows that can be and is fished for salmon. As well as other spots within these call areas. I have fished for salmon twenty, twenty-two miles off the coast back in nineteen eighty-two. In this, in, in May, um, here in northern, uh, in northern California area. So. You don't have valid data, uh, when it comes to salmon fisheries for one. There is no logbooks, no BMS, no AIS, uh, that's required for those vessels that typically fish those industries. So how are you going to generate that information accurately? Um, i- is my, my leading question. Uh, can I get an answer to that one?
I, I think the answer is we are partnering with a lot of people, but you're here today telling us about salmon fisheries and. The fact that the data that we have is skewed and that you're aware of. Other fishing. I will say if you're aware of other data about salmon fishing. Beyond what we are able to get elsewhere, uh, we would really like to know about that and we'd like you to submit it. Otherwise, uh, the option that we have is to continue to talk to people and I think that we've already mentioned our. Desire to try to figure out the right way to engage in a more targeted way of some specific fisheries and, uh, that might be the only way to do it if there's not a data set, but. Thank you for the comment and I, I, I guess the bottom line is we, we want to talk to you to figure out how to get better information.
Well, and then, and then you guys want to host meetings, but. As they did with the killer wells, uh, the Southern Resident Killer Wells, they only hosted three on the west coast. And most had to travel for those. The one that was held here and for Oregon, we had to travel to Newport. Which generally when you hold these meetings or times when the, unfortunately, the weather's good and people are fishing and. And they're going to choose unfortunately their, to pay for their, their meals for their family or their mortgage or insurance or whatever else they need. And cannot attend these meetings. So when you hold them, don't hold them in one area, spread them throughout the entire coast, the entire area that you're in impacting here. Um, and then my final comment that I'll make here is when it comes to these call areas, why doesn't Boom or anybody else? Call out what the fleet, whether it's commercial salmon fishermen, tuna fishermen, whether recreational commercial or, or, or commercial, because there's a lot of that that is done out of Winchester Bay. And Coos Bay, um, and some out of Brookings here as well, um, that are in those wind generating areas, but why don't you? Why don't you tell the, the potential buyer of those leases? What they can and cannot build so that the fishermen can effectively know beforehand and argue yea or nay. As to what we can do. Can we troll through them? Can we transit through them from point A to point B, whatever? That's the information that we need going into this, not after you sold the lease off. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, so we're now in the wrap-up phase. Mike O, you are, um, on the marine planning committee and your hands up. So I'm not sure if you had a. Public comment or what, but why don't we turn to you and then, um, we can go into wrap-up mode.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. A lot of good. And this expression of opinions around here today and they all seem to head in one direction, but. I, I guess first off. If you, if I believe you're Carrie, just let me know. But first off. The valuation on the product of fisheries, the seafood that comes out of the ocean. X vessel is just a beginning value. It's added value as it gets processed, as it gets sold. And the value of either the sales price or the higher value, if it is higher, of cost of goods is what you should be using. Because there's a whole industry in itself that's behind the seafood to get it to the consumer.
Uh-oh, looks like we lost Mike.
I, yeah, I was having trouble hearing Mike too. I, while we're seeing if he comes back, I, we've had a couple of questions about the fishing data today and. I'm just going to say that, and, and this is Rick again with, uh, Office of Environment in Bone Pacific. I, I just want to say that. Given where we were, we, we were trying to communicate with the fishing maps and the data we presented that we have a little bit of information. So we're aware that there are some, going to be some. Things that we need to talk about with people and we're just showing you, uh, sort of our baseline of, of what we're aware of, but we know we need to talk more. I think Frank was showing some. I think Frank was showing some, uh, data about values and, and I think he was explaining the reason we did that was to say that we were, we were kind of portray a picture of what we, uh, thought was probably the higher value catches that, um, we could, we could sort of explain in a, in a hopefully pretty clear way that we knew what, what they, the, which ones were the higher value and, and, uh, sort of had an idea of what we thought the baseline was gonna be for what these call areas meant. But it didn't mean that we had perfect data on fishing and it didn't mean that we were only gonna look at that and it didn't mean that that was gonna be the end of the analysis. We were just trying to express that, you know, again, sort of, uh, here, here's what we know today and how we know these call areas as we're proposing them sort of interplay in a value perspective with those major fisheries. That, that's all. It, it wasn't to say that nothing else is important or that we're done with our data gathering or analysis, so. With that, I'll pause again. I, I don't wanna take up Mike's time if he's back with his audio.
I am, but that answer, uh, satisfies me. The, the other part though, and I don't mean to take any more jabs, but I will, uh, so I hope you can pass it on up the ladder is, when you say there's no metrics that we can, that are printed, this is the decision-making process, it really scares the heck out of me when it comes to doing an EIS or an EA. And I just say that because it's BOM's responsibility, as I understand it, do those. And it's been said time after time, this process doesn't work to take in all considerations if you do it after you're launched out there and you've got leases out and a lot of investment on the line. So, that's it for tonight, but I appreciate you guys taking it and, uh, you know, because it's been a pretty rough one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, a quick response then to the second point before Kerry goes into his wrap-up, I'll say, thanks and understood. And, and just so people know, I think you, I'll probably do, but just for, widespread understanding here, when we get to talking about, uh, impacts and environmental impact statement, we do ten, we, we, we do identify levels of impact, so they, they sort of go by normal, normal clatures, kind of like minor, moderate and major sorts of impacts and, uh, so it's true, I'll repeat that there are no bright line metrics, but we will, and EIS is provide some relative basis for sort of, uh, giving people the ability to, to see our take at what the scale of impacts are on resources and on uh, other socio-cultural considerations.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, uh, now we are definitely into wrap-up phase. I have a quick question for BOM. You, I, I know that you've addressed this, but as far as the call notice itself, I think you've said March-April timeframe. Do you have a, any narrower idea of when that might go out and how long the actual comment period would be?
Sure, thanks, Kerry. I was just, oh, are you gonna take that one, Whitney?
I was just giving enough of a pause if in case you didn't. I'm happy to address, but Doug, take it away. So, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, Whitney. And I'll just say, you know, I, I would love to say we knew exactly what date it's going to be published and I think the March-April is, you know, is probably as refined as we can get right now, because you know of our internal processes of reviewing of the document before it goes out. So, I, I, I think unfortunately, I don't have a great answer for the, the timing of it. You know, and I can also say that, you know, by regulation, I, I believe it's a forty-five day comment period on the call and, you know, again, not necessarily committing too much, because I don't know how things will change, but we are expecting to have a sixty-day comment period on that call when it does publish. So, that, that's our intent right now, moving forward with the process, but, you know, I just wanted to caveat it that although not expected, I, things could change moving forward.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. That's what I thought. Um, and the reason I asked that is because, you know, looking at our council meeting calendar, uh, you know, we have a early mid-March meeting, we have an early mid-April meeting, and then we have sixty days until our June meeting. So, if the council wants to consider in a public forum, um, you know, uh, sort of cohesive comments in response to the, the call notice, we, you know, we always prefer to have those developed and discussed, uh, in an open, transparent, public forum. So, the worst timing for us would be if, uh, if, uh, even if a sixty-day notice came out, say, like, right in the middle of our April council meeting and then, uh, then we're kind of forced into this quick response letter process, which, which can be effective, but it's not ideal. And I don't mean that as a complaint, it's just an observation. And, uh, I'll, I'll segue to, uh, Yvonne's comment that she put, you know, in the, in the chat and, Mike Conroy responded, Mike, Mike, you were accurate. And I think, um, I think the answer is that, uh, we, we do have marine planning on the agenda one week from today. And, uh, so these Friday meetings, I don't know, they're becoming a habit, but, um, so it is on the March council meeting agenda, is not on the April council meeting agenda. It can be added, you know, if necessary, but, um, what I'm envisioning here is that, uh, between the Marine Planning Committee's report that's in the briefing book, between the supplemental material that is, that is, you know, available out there in the, you know, public forum, um, with, with regard to the, uh, the call areas, that all will be, you know, considered, discussed by the council and we're hoping to get, you know, some feedback, even though the notice isn't out yet. We're hoping that there will be some meaningful feedback and advice and guidance that can help lay the groundwork for what will become the council's, uh, you know, cohesive, um, response to the, to the call notice, whether that would be, you know, right during or after the April meeting or in May, or I don't know, but anyway. So, it's kind of a long-winded way of saying that, you know, I, I feel like we're building the, you know, the, the, you know, the basics for what will be the, the council's comment on, on, on this when the notice comes out. Seems like there was one other thing. Well, I guess, I guess that's really it for now. You know, I did mention that there will be, uh, hopefully a summary and a link to the video for this meeting. We'll post it to, to the meeting webpage, uh, and then there's the BOM email address for people who wanna follow up with public, for, for comments. I saw some in the chat. I think we got to most of them, but if anyone wants to send an email to that Renewable Energy POCs at bome.gov email, um, it, uh, you can do that. And so, I guess maybe I'll just stop there and look to, let's look to BOM, uh, to see if you have any wrap-up remarks and then to the chairs to bring it home and finish.
Thanks, Kerry. This is Nessie Sumait, and, um, I guess I'll, I'll just say a, a few words and, and first of all, thank you to, um, to everyone for just spending your several hours with us this afternoon, um, particularly with, um, special thanks to the council and and you, Kerry, for facilitating, um, this conversation and to my BOM colleagues for handling the questions. And, um, I think we heard a lot of really, um, informative information here. I mean, even data that I think, uh, I think when we got to some of those, Rick called them out. I mean, those are exactly what we're looking for. And I think that's really, um, the goal of, of, of trying to have these conversations. So, I mean, I just wanna maybe like stress a couple of points and then maybe provide some, um, suggestions for like how we, we can continue to work together. Um, just on the timeline, um, I think, as, as you heard from Doug, the timelines are there. I mean, you know, we, as public, um, uh, employees, we need to be accountable and we need to be transparent. And, and I know we've been asked before, like, when are you gonna do what or when are you gonna do this? So, I think it was important for us to be transparent about what we are going to do and when. A target puts in perspective, you know, what we're trying to do. Um, and that's really what those are there for. And as Doug said, they're not cast in stone, because anything we do going forward has to be based on, you know, has to have a good foundation for any decisions that, um, we, we, um, issue going forward. So, um, you know, just understand that, you know, we need to have timelines. And we need to be accountable and we need to put it out there, but certainly, um, you know, we are going to continue to revisit those as we move through with the process. And then, you know, the second point, which has, we've, we've tried to articulate today, is that our work is not done. I think, you know, we, we showed you where the data took us. This is where the call areas are. They're, they're big, they're huge. We, our maps show that there are still conflicts. That's what we are trying to say, um, in, in this conversation. We, we just wanted to say that this is where the data that we feel comfortable with, that we understand, took us. Um, and what needs to happen next is then we can all look at those polygons, at those call areas and refine them. You know, certainly there, there are conflicts and, and our slides show that, so, um, we didn't determine anything. We simply said, this is where the data took us. And, you know, hopefully by giving you this advanced notice of what we're gonna do before we do it, which is, you know, this is what we're gonna do, this is gonna be the call. When you get the federal register, it, it, it would just articulate everything that we've kind of, or at least put in writing, the, the delineation approach that we took, that Whitney has shared in the task force and that we, again, did today. So, there shouldn't really be any, you know, it would just document what we, we've already said. So, hopefully, giving you this advanced notice before we do anything and then get that public comment period there, can, can be helpful in, um, sort of, you know, figuring out what, what the comment. And then I guess, you know, like, maybe finally, I think, now that we're there, so how do we go forward? You know, Whitney put out that, that last slide of our continued engagement. That is what BOM is thinking we would do, right? But I think we are looking for you, to you to try to help guide that conversation. I mean, I, it may not be apparent to all, but at, at least just for me, it just looks like we, we are kind of making incremental improvements. I hope this, this ad hoc marine planning committee got formed specifically, um, to be, to engage with BOM. And I think it's really been helpful, right? Um, and so, um, maybe that is a way that we can sort of come up with a more structured approach going forward. And if nothing else, we can at least have an alignment on data going forward. Um, you know, how to approach, and, and, and the other thing is that I think this webinar came about with just continuing to have conversations with you guys. We've heard in public webinars that we're not reaching the right folks. And so, I think we, we talked to some of you and, and asked, well, then how do we do that? And when do we do that? And I think those conversations led to, well, it probably makes sense when we have calls and then we should have like an all-in fishing webinar. And then there was a conversation of who should host that. And then thankfully, PFMC, um, you know, offered to do that, so. I, I, I guess I'm just trying to say that we, you know, we're trying from our end. We need to continue to just have these conversations, um, going forward. And specifically for, um, the ad hoc marine planning committee, if you can, and I'm sorry to kind of put you on the spot, but like, maybe like another ask to, to help us, um, to, to formulate our plan for this continued engagement going forward. And, you know, take this, the, the last slide that Whitney had, that's what we plan to do. I mean, is that the way that we should do it? You know, are there other suggestions? We certainly, you know, that, um, OSU study came up, we'll, we'll, uh, take a look at that as well. But I, I, I think that if we can at least kind of come together to, you know, uh, get alignment on, on the data, because there are gonna be conversations that I think are more programmatic in nature. I mean, we've had several of those today that, you know, we can't address solely in the region. But we could at least look to make sure that we continue to refine the data within the call areas that we have, so that as we move forward, you know, we, we have data that at least everyone has, well, at least most people or whoever can, has, has taken a look at. So, I mean, I, you know, I'll stop there, um, and see what, uh, Marine Planning Committee would, would like to do, but I guess I'm just saying that BOM is hoping to engage and plan forward in a way that makes sense for everyone.
Thank you, Nessie. Doug or anyone else from BOM?
No, I think Nessie did a great job. Thanks, Kerry.
Okay, well, um, Mike Conroy and Susan as chairs, if you have anything to say, go for it now. Otherwise, then I think we can wrap it up.
Yeah, thanks, Kerry. Susan, you wanna go first?
Um, sure, I'll be brief. I just wanna say thank you to everybody who was here today. And I think we had some good input and, and just thank you. It's late in the day. I can't really think anymore.
Yeah, so I'll go now, Kerry. Yeah, I, I wanna thank everybody for attending who attended. Um, it's so nice to hear different people's voices on these calls. You know, I, I noted it, just about every, I think, every, each council managed fishery and, you know, other state-managed fisheries, uh, weighed in today, representatives from those fleets. You know, the, the, I, I, I took away a number of things from this call here today. I think one of them is, is that, you know, the BOM process is different than our process. You know, we're more through the council and fisheries management, i- i- it's more of a bottom-up stakeholder-driven process. And, and, you know, from what I can see, BOM is, is more of a top-down process. You know, in, in, for those of us in the fisheries world, if, if you wanna try to do something, you, you have to show that it's gonna do what you say it's gonna do, but also more importantly, that it's not gonna do what you don't want it to do. And I think in terms of the BOM process, at least my humble, uh, perception is, is some of the foundational questions that need to be answered aren't, are, are put off until, you know, foreign bidders have bid four-point-five billion dollars for five-hundred thousand acres. You know, if these are gonna impact upwelling in the California current and destroy ecosystem function, then we probably wanna know that before we, you know, make such commitments of time, energy, resources and the like. You know, the, the one thing that I, that I do wanna comment on specifically is, you know, this conversation about the, you know, the winnowing down of call areas and, and the like, and I, I get that and I appreciate that and I hope that's the case. You know, but all we can do is, is rely upon what we've seen in California and what we saw on the, on the East Coast, you know, in, in California, two out of the three call areas went forward as wind energy areas as designed. You know, granted, the, the, the Morro Bay Call Area was extended and then reduced a little bit, but, you know, for the most part, it went through as, as that and the wind energy area in Humboldt is exactly the same as the call area that was identified. Appreciate all the comments that are in the chat. I, I do wanna note, highlight, you know, there is an MOU in place between BOM, NOAA and ROTA to help answer some of these data questions. And I know that Annie from ROTA threw a comment in the chat about, you know, offering to help, uh, with that. And I, and I would hope that BOM and us and everybody, you know, reach out and, and try to figure out ways that we can learn from what they done on the East Coast so that the data that's used is both correct, meaningful and paints a complete picture. But, you know, most importantly though, just thanks. Thanks everybody for taking the time out of your Friday to lay way in here, listen and, you know, it was a, I, I fully understand the, the passions behind some of the, the comments and it's, it, it's, it's scary for sure. And with that, I'll, I'll shut up so that we can start our weekends.
Alrighty, well, yeah, I echo all those comments. Thank you very much, um, uh, for everyone, uh, who, uh, attended today and shared their thoughts and comments and questions and answers. Uh, not easy, but it's important and you're all here and you're all engaged. So, with that, we will, um, adjourn this meeting. Everyone have a safe and a good weekend and, uh, thank you again.